And open up the meeting and have roll call and then he'll also do a ceremonial closing of the meeting. Councilmember Silva.
I've always wanted to do this. (laughter). Order, or, no, just kidding. Mr. Mayor, before I open the meeting, well, I suppose I should go ahead and open the meeting, but I'd also like just a minute or two just to have a few words.
After the roll call, if we can, we'll both suspend the rules and we'll have you do a few comments.
Thank you. It is now 6:30, February 25th. It's our regular meeting. I will now call this meeting to order. Madam Clerk, can we have a roll call?
Councilmember Silva?
Here.
Mayor Cordova?
Here.
Councilmember Abita?
Here.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Here.
Councilmember Edalda?
Here.
I forgot to do this.[52.12][52.12](laughter). There it is.[54.12][54.12](laughter). Okay. We do have a quorum. All right. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Stand for the pleasure of leading. Mr. Mayor, if I may, can you lead us in the pleasure of leading? You never do that.
I never lead, okay.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Councilmember Silva, have a few words.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would just like to express my gratitude, first of all, to all the great employees of the Town of Taos. I'd also like to thank all the directors of the Town of Taos. We've got some great directors here. Thank you, Ruben, Renee, Marietta. I'd also like to thank the Your Honor Judge for working with the Town of Taos and Taos PD and treating all our constituents the best possible way you can. Our Assistant Manager, Abigail, thank you for everything that you do. Oscar, thank you. Youth councilmembers, thank you. I'd also like to thank my colleagues of council. Thank you very much. Mr. Mayor, a special thank you because you actually appointed me five years, two months ago, and a thank you to the council then who ratified that appointment. I'd like to thank my wife, my family, but most of all, I'd like to thank you all, the constituents, the good people of the Town of Taos, for placing your trust and faith in me to serve you for the last five years. So for that, I thank you and I'm deeply grateful for that. Thank you. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Thank you.[163.16][163.16](applause). As you know, those of you that weren't in attendance, at the State of the Town address, we gave councilmember Silva a proclamation and they proclaimed that day his day for his years of service. And I just want to say also that it certainly has been a pleasure, councilmember Silva, serving with you. I've known you for many, many years in the community and I knew that appointing you was going to be a good choice, given your deep wealth of business knowledge and so much knowledge of our community, and you've served the community well. I have no doubt in my mind and our constituents are going to be grateful for a lot of the decisions that you've made, and it certainly has been a privilege serving with you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Councilmembers, do you guys want to say anything else before we move on?
Mr. Mayor, thank you. Councilmember Silva, I remember when I decided to run a couple of years ago, you were one of the first persons that I talked to with regards to just talking about how diverse this council was and where it was previously and where my vision was of seeing it going. And during the last two years that I've served on this council, I've really enjoyed serving with you as a council member, especially hearing some of the war stories from before. So I wish you well in all your future endeavors, and I'm sure we'll see you around the Town of Taos quite a bit. Please don't hesitate to call on me especially, and I'm sure any of us. Should you have anything, I wish you well and your family well, and I wish you prosperous from here in the future.
Thank you for those kind words. Thank you.
Councilmember Abita?
Thank you, Mayor Cordova. Councilmember Silva, five years ago, I worked really hard to convince you to throw your name in the hat, and you did, and for that, I thank you. It's been a very interesting five years. It's been a good experience for you, and now I wish you the best of luck in your future endeavors.
Thank you.
Councilmember Edalda?
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmember Silva, it's been a pleasure working with you for the last couple of years, but it's also been a pleasure working with you and your family over the years, and I wish you the best in the future, and I hope you do strongly consider your run for County Commission.
Thank you very much, and I appreciate that, and I think that is the direction I'm headed. So I'm not going far. I want to stay involved in local government, so I won't be going too far. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Okay. Okay, we will move on with the agenda. Welcome everyone to our meeting. Those of you in attendance, we may see who is here for the parking meters, and I will ask the council to make some considerations on the approval of the agenda. We'll go on to the approval of the agenda. Would like to amend the agenda to allow Luis Reyes from Kik Carson Electric the opportunity to give us a briefing on the update, update on the broadband status, and also our engineers for the airport, if they can go first under the Citizens Forum so that they can give us an update and some interesting, good news on the update and design of the Taos Regional Airport. So with those amendments, councilmembers, if there's no other changes, I would entertain a motion to approve.
So move, Mr. Mayor.
Second. Motion as amended and second as amended. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Next, we will go to item 5A, the meeting minutes of January 28, 2014, special meeting minutes. Is there any changes or questions to those meeting minutes as presented? If not, entertain a motion to approve.
So move, Mr. Mayor.
Second.
Motion to approve and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Next, we will go to the meeting minutes of January 28, 2014, regular meeting minutes. Entertain a motion to approve if there's no changes to those meeting minutes.
Have none, Mr. Mayor.
Move for approval, Mr. Mayor.
Second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Next, we will go to the meeting minutes of January 29, 2014, the State of the Town meeting minutes. Entertain a motion to approve those minutes as presented.
So move.
Second.
And a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Next, we will go to awards and recognitions. Do we have the plaque?[425.12][425.12](pause). This time, ladies and gentlemen, I'd like to make a special recognition for an individual that has served our community very, very well, not only at the local level, but at the state level, and getting our fair of recognition and protection of our water rights. And not only does she adamantly care about this community, but she has made sure that at the state level, the Town of Taos has received their fair share of water rights, water adjudication, water funding, you know, allocations. So at this time, I would, it's my honor to call up Mrs. Trudy Healy and her family, her husband.[475.27][475.27](applause). At this time, it's my honor as mayor of the Town of Taos, Ms. Trudy Healy is no longer serving on the Water Trust Board of the State of New Mexico, and I'd like to read this proclamation as follows, and it's a certificate of appreciation from the office of the mayor. Whereas Trudy Valerio from ranches of Taos acquired her passion for the Asequia culture from her father, Juan I. Valerio, who served as mayor of Domo for 40 years, and whereas Trudy married Ed Ed Healy, whose family founded the Utah Construction, which oversaw six companies, which built the Hoover Dam and later merged with General Electric, Trudy has two children, Lee and Feliz, whereas she has cowboyed some of the largest spreads in northern New Mexico, and during that time became an advocate for Ellen Savery of the UU Bar Ranch in Cimarron, whereas where grasslands and livestock flourished, creating new growth and water sources, and whereas Trudy later helped five South African chefs, chiefs, together with Ellen Savery's methods, helping the South African villages to become self-sustaining and manage water effectively, whereas she was nominated to the Cowgirl Hall of Fame for her pioneering work. Whereas water is truly primary passion, which coincided with the Healy Foundation's focus to ensure that all New Mexico communities are healthy, our focus is on land, water issues and projects, and whereas Trudy received the New Mexico Department of Agriculture's Partnership Award for her efforts in creating regulatory training partnership at the New Mexico State University to aid agricultural industries, and whereas she has been honored by the Office of the State Engineers, Interstate Stream Commission, and Navajo Nation for her funding of Public Broadcasting Service Documentary, The Water Haulers, which about the, which is about the San Juan Basin Water Rights Settlement, whereas the Healy Foundation funds the New Mexico Bureau of Geology and Mineral Resources for the aquifer mapping and monitoring of the state of New Mexico, whereas the Town of Taos recognized the, with a communitarian award for her save the water, save the communities effort, she has been honored by the Rocky Mountain Youth Corps for her outstanding work in protecting New Mexico's watershed leadership. New Mexico honored Trudy with the Distinguished Alumni's Award for philanthropy and her focus on statewide water issues, whereas Trudy was featured for her contributions in Remarkable Women of Taos, where she was deemed the water protector, and whereas she has traveled across New Mexico to garner votes for the successful passage of New Mexico Constitutional Amendment III in 2006, which created a water trust fund to support projects designed to preserve and protect the state's water supply. Now therefore, I Darren Cordova, Mayor of Taos, do hereby proclaim that Trudy Valerio Healy be recognized for the significant contributions that she has made protecting New Mexico's valuable water resource, and be it further resolved that the appreciation of the Town of Taos be extended to Trudy for her generous giving of the time and financial resources in support of related water projects. Signed this 25th day of February 2014. Trudy? Thank you.[695.44][695.44](applause). I just, I just want to say, (applause), I just want to say that because of Trudy's work, the Town of Taos, every time we were testifying at the hearings at the State of New Mexico, she was an avid, avid supporter of the projects that the Town of Taos took. And I had the opportunity of working with her, and because of her hard work and the staff here taking advantage of her position in Santa Fe, the, we received so much funding from the Water Trust Board because of our viable projects that we were able to bring together at the Water Trust Board, and because of that, we have one of the most state-of-the-art wastewater treatment facilities in the state of New Mexico, and we invested over $10 million in that in conjunction with Trudy Healy and the Water Trust Board. Thank you so much for everything you did for the Town of Taos. Can you say a few words?[758.56][758.56](applause).
I wasn't really prepared to speak, but, you know, I got honored the other day at the Senate and the House of Representatives, but it didn't mean as much to me as it did tonight to see Tausenios honoring me, and I just want to say that it's been really, really hard fighting for our water. I don't know if I could say this without crying. It's, I just was up at the legislature up to the 11th hour, and our water's in a lot of danger, and anybody that wants to call me and talk about it, I'll be glad to. But now that I'm not there protecting the water anymore, it's a very scary thing, and I'm just going to ask everybody in here to really pray to the direction it's going. And thank you once again. I love all of you.[809.12][809.12](applause).
Again, Trudy, thank you so much for everything you did for Taos during your tenure on the Water Trust Board, and what we gave you there is just a small token of our appreciation. Thank you. This time, I'd like to bring up Honorable Judge Richard Chavez, Judge Chavez, to come and administer the oath of office to new firefighter Anthony El Martinez. We can have Anthony come up along with your family, if you'd like. Judge, welcome.
Could I please have the family of Anthony come forward, please? Comadre Joe, compadre, comadre Berlinda, compadre Joe, come on up. Bella.[874.12][874.12](pause). Joel.[876.12][876.12](pause). Okay, ladies and gentlemen, this is, this is kind of special for me too, because Anthony's wife, Joel, is my godchild, so it's like family. So anyway, here we go. Raise your right hand, please, Anthony. I, Anthony Martinez.
I, Anthony Martinez.
Having been appointed to the firefighter.
Having been appointed to the firefighter.
In and for the Town of Taos.
In and for the Town of Taos.
Fire Department.
Fire Department.
At the regular council meeting.
At the regular council meeting.
Of the governing body of the Town of Taos.
The governing body of the Town of Taos.
On February 25, 2014.
On February 25, 2014.
In the county of Taos.
In the county of Taos.
State of New Mexico.
State of New Mexico.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
To perform the duties of firefighter.
To perform the duties of firefighter.
Serving and protecting the lives and property.
Serving and protecting the lives and property.
Of the citizens of the Taos.
Of the citizens of Taos.
And I will faithfully and impartially discharge.
And I will faithfully and impartially discharge.
The duties of said office.
The duties of said office.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.[975.62][975.62](pause).
Sorry about that. Oh, Anthony, here. Right there.[979.62][979.62](pause). Congratulations, Anthony.[981.62][981.62](applause). Anthony.
Welcome aboard.
Sorry, the family can sit.
Oh, family, sit.
Now it's my turn, that's my turn to do the honors.[997.12][997.12](laugh).
At this time, it's with great honor that we welcome you to one of our finest departments of law enforcement and public health safety, and that is our fire department. You're going to be surrounded a great team, so at this time, I would like to present you with your commission of the Town of Taos. The Town of Taos Fire Department Commission, to all whom these presents may come, greetings know ye, that the mayor of Taos, New Mexico, by virtue of the authority vested in that office by the laws of the Town of Taos, reposing special trust and confidence in Anthony El Martinez, thus hereby constitute, appoint and commission him as firefighter. In testimony whereof, the Town of Taos Fire Department has caused these present to be signed by the mayor of the Town of Taos, under the seal of the Town of Taos, New Mexico, this 25th day of February 2014. Signed, Office of the Mayor Darren Cordova. Welcome.[1051.99][1051.99](applause).
Chief.
And all the other guys are dressed up, ready to come in here. We have a structure fire.
I just want to let the family know, thank you all for allowing Anthony to serve the Town of Taos, and know that he will be in good hands with these fine gentlemen of the fire department.
Thank you.
Okay, at this time, we will go to the Citizens Forum, and we would like to call at this time the engineers. Do you have the names for the engineers? Oscar?
Mr. Garcia is the only one I.
If you could introduce yourselves for the record. Gentlemen, I know, I know you guys drew a blank here. Mr. Garcia, welcome.
Michael Garcia.
Tim Marchabec.
Welcome to our meeting.
Thank you, gentlemen.
First of all, mayor and councilmembers, I'd like to give an update of your, the construction we have on your SRE building, that we are here today basically watching them pour the, the new foundation and slab for the new SRE, and it's basically on schedule. We'll be finished with that, it's on schedule to be finished March 27th, so we're on schedule, maybe a little bit ahead, so just wanted to give you that update. Michael, give you update on the runway.
Good news. Your documents, the plans, specifications are completed. They're stamped, they are, we did deliver the set, the documents to Mr. Thompson.
This is for the.
Runway.
New runway, the cross runway.
Yes, sir, I apologize. For runway 1230, those documents are with Mr. Thompson at the airport. We gave him two sets of documents. These documents as well have been submitted to the FAA and to the State Aviation Division, and this will close out the design process for the, for the new runway. The next phase, so where do we go from here? For, for the Town of Taos, where you go from here is we start looking ahead. In this federal fiscal year, which we're in now in 14, the FAA and the State Aviation are ready to get the first phase bid out. What you will be seeing next, before the council, would be your State Aviation Grant. We will be getting that to Mr. Thompson to get, to get before you here, I think, at the next council meeting, and we'll be working with, with Mr. Rodriguez and John Thompson on getting you that document to submit to the State Aviation Division. What happens then, the state is ready for this, they're, they're ready to go for the first phase, we'll be getting this, first phase bid out, we're looking at, with the FAA's approval, now, the bidding process with the FAA, they have to actually give the town and us permission to bid the project. So we will have this ready to bid in May, that's our goal. Now, that doesn't mean it'll go on the street in May, but that's what, and the FAA is ready for this, so it should happen around May. We hopefully are looking to get a notice to, of award and notice to proceed here thereafter in June or July. So that will get the first phase construction underway, and after that, subsequent years, it'll, it'll just keep moving ahead.
This is absolutely great news to see that it's on track. The airport is going to be built. We're standing by that commitment that we, that we stood with, so thank you all for making sure that we're, we're on track with compliance with this grant and making sure that we don't lose focus on that, so thank you. Councilmember Feld.
Mr. Mayor, if I could just ask, this is a three-phase project, as you mentioned. What is involved in each phase and what is the estimated cost of each phase?
First phase was the design phase. That's what we're closing up. Second phase, we're looking at doing basically shortening of the existing runway 422 and getting the earth, the dirt work completed in the first phase for the new runway trajectory. The third phase would be basically to put the electrical in, the runway lights, taxi wheel lights, signs, and pave it. The budget, to be honest with you, council, put out the, really, because it's a public bidding process, if I disclose the numbers, it could alter the bids. I kind of am hesitant, and, and just because it's a public process.
Percentage-wise. That way you don't do those numbers.
Sir, it's about a third is the first, I mean, the second phase and construction will cover, um, close to four, oh, let's go 40 percentage.
And then the last phase will be 60%?
Sir.
That's the two construction processes?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
That's, that's right now what's, what the FAA is looking at, to be honest with, that, that's really what they're looking at. Now, those numbers with the FAA could fluctuate, just depending on, on how much Congress, you know, it's all to people in Washington as far as what they allot, and, and they give them every year. In this fiscal year, the FAA did get their normal lottery, 3 point, I think it was 3.4 billion, which is pretty normal. We can't speak for 15, what the president will give them, the FAA at that time, so those dollars fluctuate on their fiscal years.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments, questions?
I just want to say congratulations on, to all of you for getting this. I mean, it is a big step. Everybody's excited with the FAA and with the State Aviation Division. We work at a lot of airports here in the state, including the Roswell Center, the big ones, and everybody is well aware of your project, and everybody's excited for the Town of Taos.
Well, I think congratulations should be extended to you as well, but most importantly to our staff. I think this is one of the largest projects that we've been working on, and I know it's a lot of vigorous paperwork that we've been working on, so kudos to the staff for keeping their eye on this target, and also congratulations to this council.
Yes.
For making sure that it's a priority that we didn't lose focus on and that we kept it on track.
Yes, sir.
So, thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Next, we will bring up CEO of Kik Carson Electric, Mr. Luis Reyes. Welcome to our meeting. I'd like to welcome his wife as well. Welcome.[1478.02][1478.02](pause). Mr. Reyes, welcome to our meeting.
Welcome. Good evening.
An airport, 25 million, now we're seeing where we are in progress with our $64 million broadband project.
64. Class. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Mr. Manager, thank you for this opportunity for me to give you a briefing and update of both the broadband project, the fiber to the home, and some of the financial impacts or economic impacts that it's created through the construction phase, and then out of that, based on that and based on this tool, what we think the community can use the broadband project for. As you all know, the project itself was a $64 million award, 70% grant, 30% loan, so the loan portion of this is $19.1 million. From a business perspective, on day one, the co-op and its members have 70% equity in a carrier class network. It's a true fiber network. As of today, the project is 60% complete. About 80% of the underground is complete, and about 55% of the overhead is complete. Of the difference, of the 60%, of the 40%, about 20% is backbone, and the other 20% is the actual drops to the homes and businesses in our service territory. We have, to date, spent $30 million on the project that we've paid out. We have $4.8 million that we've allocated to the electronics, so again, we've completed 60% of the project, and we've expended 56% of the funds. So we're right on schedule to be right within budget today. I think the only thing that will be short is if, based on the take rate of the people who want fiber, actually fiber optic to the home. Outside of that, we're right, right on budget for this project. I think the other thing to, to mention is indirectly, because of the project, it's caused Kik Carson and its upgrade of other systems to expend an additional $16 million to upgrade some of its other facilities to accommodate the fiber, which again benefits the members on the electric side. So, so Mr. Mayor, this project is not a $64 million, but it's turned out to be about an $80, $85 million project, either with grant money or very low interest money. The interest rates that we're paying on this are right now 3.3%. And so we're currently attempting to fix those for the term of the note, which would be 21 years. The head-end construction, and the head-end is the electronics that power the system, the brains of the, of the system, that currently is being installed. We have, we have engaged Fujitsu USA to do that. The call center ACT moved out, and so the board of Kik Carson is converting that into a data center. It was designed for telecommunications. It's, it's backed up by its own power supply, both on the UPS side and on the generator side, and we will have that center operational April 21st. Light will start to flow through the fiber that we have built on April 2nd. There'll be about a two to three week period to test the systems, and generally what we do is we test the splices, we test the networks to, to, to ensure that the fiber, the light is going to get to the end of the line. What that means to the members of Kik Carson is on or about the 21st of April, Kik Carson will start delivering services to the Amalia, Costia, Cuesta, Arroondo, and parts of Taos area, and we'll be delivering both high-speed internet and phone It was designed for telecommunications. It's, it's backed up by its own power supply, both on the UPS side and on the generator side. And we will have that center operational April twenty-first. Light will start to flow through the fiber that we have built on April second. There'll be about a two-to-three week period to test the systems. And generally, what we do is we test the splices. We test the networks to, to, to ensure that the fiber, the light is going to get to the end of the line. What that means to the members of Kit Carson is on or about the twenty-first of April, Kit Carson will start delivering services to the Amalia, Costilla, Cuesta, Arroyo, Hondo, and parts of Taos area. And we'll be delivering both high-speed internet and phone service. Kit Carson has also got licenses to offer phone, video, and, one more of the sips were mine. Then during the course of the year, and we're hopeful by the end of the year, that the, the twenty percent of the backbone will be complete. And then, starting March first, well, that's a Saturday, starting March second or third, whatever the Monday is, we're going to start doing the drops. The drops will be done completely by local contractors that have the expertise. Over the course of the two-year project, we have built some of the skill sets needed to build a fiber network and also to maintain it. So, we have not just used this fiber network to build a network, but also build skill sets that we can utilize into the future. As I mentioned earlier, this will be a carrier-class network, which means we will compete directly with CenturyLink and any other provider in the region for those services. Currently, we have about four-hundred-and-twenty miles of underground fiber in the ground. And we have a little over five-hundred miles of overhead fiber ready to go. We have conducted two tests. We've done an alpha test, which is a fiber to a wireless network to determine what kind of speeds we can get and also work out the bugs. The alpha test was done in Pot Creek. We chose Pot Creek mainly because CenturyLink did not have any DSL or any broadband services there. All they had was dial-up. If you wanted broadband services there, you basically would have to go to a satellite-based Wild Blue or Hughes, which gives you about a megabit up and about half of that down. At, at SME, which was the, the head of the test bed, we were getting about twenty-five megabits up and down. All the services that Kit Carson will be serving will be what we call symmetrical. The same speed up, the same speed down versus any other systems that have, I believe it's slower uploads and fast downloads, but not symmetrical. We then started, after we completed the alpha test, we did a beta test. We selected locations in the town of Taos area, again, to approve the, the system, work out any bugs. The county courthouse was a test bed in which we, we were getting up to fifty megabits during, really during the fiestas and during the program that the town of Taos put there, just to prove that it doesn't matter where in the system you are, we can deliver those speeds economically and reliable. And so now we're ready for the, for the deployment of services. I think the other thing, just to inform the, the council, is we also have entered an agreement with other carriers to either utilize our system or to gain redundancy from their systems. We are in negotiations with CenturyLink, in which they want to utilize some of our services and facilities. And I think that validates a system when the carrier in the region, the fourteen-state region, wants to use our system to make sure they have a redundant system to serve the north-central area. We are under NDAs with the other, but we're really looking for routes north into the I-25 Denver area, routes southeast that go into Las Vegas and then into Santa Fe, into the I-25 corridor, where there's fiber that runs from Denver all the way to El Paso. And Kit Carson owns fiber from Espanola into Santa Fe. So, this network, when it's complete, will have its own network, own interoperability into the Sims Building, which is the state of New Mexico, where Do-It is, the Department of, I think, IT, where all the state records are held. And so, once we get into there, we'll be able to get people from this community into the Albuquerque markets. Why that is important is because then broadband pricing and options become very, very cheap. They come same, same price that you could pay in Albuquerque or Denver, which we think would cut, would cut costs anywhere from twenty to twenty-five percent on both internet and phone bills. Later in the year, we have executed an agreement with NCTC, that's National Cable Television Association, in which Kit Carson will start offering video services. And they will be a direct TV dish, dish equivalent, so kind of a menu of packages. Also, at that time, the electric company will split off the telecom into a subsidiary. So, it'll be its own company with its own governance under the umbrella of Kit Carson Electric, so we can separate those costs. Are there any questions so far, Mr. Mayor, from anybody?
Councilmember Pelt.
Luis, just a question. Have you, and I don't want necessarily numbers right now, but this seems to be what I'm asking for tonight. And that is, have you come up with figures to make it competitive with CenturyLink or Xfinity or whoever may be the, the competitor out there for, for the three services, in other words, in bundling?
So, so, Mr. Mayor, Councilor Pelt, we're, we're working on the bundling, but to give you an idea, today in our board meeting, this has been distributed, let's say, let's use a three-megabit, three-to-five-megabit package today. We'll offer at twenty-nine ninety-five, which is about ten dollars cheaper than CenturyLink. The thing with CenturyLink is you can get the nineteen ninety-five, but you have to get the phone for five years. That's not in our business model. So, in, in our pricing, we believe that any bundle will be about twenty percent less than the bundling because we're going directly to the same people that CenturyLink goes to for their broadband, going directly to the same location that DirecTV or Dish. So, we have some negotiators that negotiate for co-ops that are going to the same people that provide content. I think the difference is our rate of returns are much, much less. Really, our goal is to, to make enough to pay the note off, to make sure we compensate our employees well and to reinvest into the infrastructure. So, we think right off the top, Councilman, that we can be twenty-five percent less on a bundled package. I think the other difference with our network is it's a hardwired network. So, today, the DirecTV, any, any Dish network, you're subject to latency, you're subject to weather, to any environment, where ours will be really tied to if someone cuts the cable. And, and we're, we're not really immune to that if a contractor cuts the cable. And I think finally, when it goes to your question, this service will be available to any Kit Carson member. So, it's not going to be an issue that if there's trees in the way or you're too far from the central office, there won't be any excuses because we're actually, in our strategy to start in Amalia, which is the farthest point from our head-end, if we can offer those services there, then Taos is going to be relatively easy. For the past two years, we've been doing a pilot with Fujitsu Japan on wireless technologies in Penasco, which is actually tough on reading meters. And we have a ninety-nine percent read rate. In fact, we can read meters every two minutes from Penasco wirelessly. We capture it and then we bring it over our fiber network here. And it does a, a bunch of other things. So, we've been doing a lot of testing to make sure that both it's going to be the, the best price in town, but also the best service.
Mr. Mayor, one last question. And that is, when do you expect to be, let's say, ninety-five percent complete with those people who want to become your customers or tie in with, with your network?
Our, our goal is by the end of this year. I mean, we're going to start, we have enough trunk in Taos to start. We're gonna, and I'll put out a, I'll get, I'll get something to, to offer, a map of the areas that will be available in Taos. But if you take a map today from, from Arroyo North, all that area, except for Red River, will be ready to be, to be let up. The Taos area is about eighty percent done. Some of the pieces we don't have are some of the trunk line that come into town. But that's just a function of, of the weather. We stopped for a little while. The weather's been more mild, so we're going to reengage those contractors to, to step that up. But our goal really is to have anyone who wants service by the end of the year. Thanks, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Silva.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Reyes, just a couple of questions. Earlier, you said that right now, the infrastructure has been installed, is basically the backbone. And the forty percent, if I'm not mistaken, you said forty percent would be the, the service drops. Is that correct?
Twenty percent would be some of the lacking backbone in taps, and then twenty percent would be the drops.
And, and those drops to each and every, either residence or building is part of the grant? So, the, I might understand that the, the, the customers aren't going to have to pay an additional cost for that drop, or can you explain that?
That's correct. So, under the grant, we, we're going to drop to every home fiber. Whether we light it or keep it dark will be really at the option of the consumer. We will at some point integrate, and we're going to be dropping two pair or four strands of fiber. Two will be for electric and two will be for a non-electric operation. I, I think the, the goal is to get fiber to everybody. Those who deny or don't want us on the property, you know, that's fine. You know, we want to limit the hassle factor, but once the grant money is over and you're the next person that wanted, there's no more grant money, then you're gonna, you're going to be asked to pay for that. I, I think that's important because it's also an open-axis network. So, if you necessarily don't want to take service from Kit Carson, you can take service from other providers who've, who've negotiated rights to be on that network, and you can take service from them. And, and again, the way the technology is rolling out, if you look at a twenty-year crystal ball, fiber is, is what you're going to need. When we've done the analysis, everything from tourism to E-911 is going to require broadband services. And even today, when you look, you know, when we talk, talk to Taos Ski Valley, one of the things missing there is a good broadband network for those tourists who come in, who do want to check their, their emails or to check their iPads. When you go to an airport, you have hotspots. When you go to coffee shops, you have hotspots. That's just kind of the nature of what's happening. When it comes to the other side of the spectrum, which is public safety, most networks are going to go to what is called NG-911, New Generation 911, which is broadband-based. And so, there's going to be a series of towers and fiber to make sure that you got service everywhere. I think one of the unique features this community is going to have, other than, outside of other communities, is we'll have fiber to every home. You have networks that have fiber. So, Albuquerque has a fiber ring and Santa Fe has a fiber ring, but they have copper to the home. Or they don't have services to that home. So, we're in a position really to leverage that based on what the governing bodies of, of each jurisdiction want. So, that's, that's basically our game plan. We're going to start to have, I believe in a couple of weeks, start to have public meetings, both to let them know what services are going to be offered, but also to, to encourage people to sign up so that we can do the service jobs both overhead and underground.
Also, in addition, I remember previously you mentioned something to the effect that this, this project has a, an electric monitoring program or, or concept to it where a homeowner can go ahead and monitor their power usage in real time.
Right. So, so part of, you know, we have the, the one pair for electric and one pair for telecom. So, we're developing a portal with our software vendor that you can actually go to a website and look at your meter real time. You look at your, your usage over time. We can send a signal. One of the things, and this is long-term, is the ability to control certain devices that cause usage, a high-peak usage. And in return, there'll be a, a savings to the member by some kind of credit to those people who participate in those programs. And if you want to do that, if, if we want to keep our energy costs down, then you're going to have to start controlling your, 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 your electric consumption. And if you can't do that, then the co-op has programs that can do that for you. And so, I think that's going to be integral because that, that's kind of the way the utilities are going. I think the other thing that's, that's missing this, and we're doing this today, is Kit Carson has about over six megawatts of solar today, which is about eleven percent of our peak comes from solar. We need to do a better job in controlling that so we can determine, do we release that energy from the panels during that time? Or is it going to be cloudy tomorrow? Do we store it and then release it? Because on cloudy and cold days, that's where you get a peak. You can only do that with technology. And, and so, there are, there are a bunch of benefits that are really, and, and there's some that I haven't even thought of that we can, as a community, get a handle on, keep, keep the cost of living down by the use of the fiber network. And it, you know, it can go anywhere from video for monitoring, security, to energy efficiency, to hotspots. You know, placing hotspots in the plaza, so when people go into the plaza and sit around, they can enjoy for, for some period of time free internet connectivity. We think we can accomplish that because the ready network goes through Espanola and into Santa Fe. And again, one of our strategies is if we can get non-Kit Carson members, Espanola, Santa Fe, to buy services, they can then subsidize, and that, that's how we keep the pricing here, because you have a non-Kit Carson member paying for our debt service. And so, that's why it's important to be able to, to reach out and tie into the other fiber networks.
And lastly.
Hold on, hold, hold. You sit down or you're not going to interrupt? I'm not going to ask you again. One more time and then I'll ask you to leave.
Mr. Reyes, earlier you said that, that the internet was gonna, you're going to create its own entity on the internet side. Is that going to be, or is that going to have its own board? Or is it still going to be overseen by the existing co-op board?
No, my recommendation and our legal counsel's recommendation, they have its own board appointed by the board, just like the propane. The propane has its independent board. They give quarterly reports to the, to the parent, but they have their own board. And, and we do that really to, for fiduciary responsibility and also for any liabilities. So, they'll create a separate board that will govern that entity on a day-to-day basis.
Good. I just want to finish off by saying thank, thank you and thank you to the, to the board for these, these positive initiatives that have taken place that will affect many people's lives in a positive way moving forward. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, just, just a couple of things. And again, I don't want to take anyone's time, but this is a
Mr. Reyes, let me just, just for the, for the listening audience, the council did suspend the rules when you, when you asked to, to come in and you requested this on Friday. And we, we did allow for that. And we did publicize that we would be receiving this update. It's a very important update. So.
Thank you. So, on the reliability side, we're creating a ring. So, just imagine, and it's a ten-gigabit ring. So, when we're talking, you know, in years, it was megabits. This is a ten-gigabit ring. This, this will match projects that are being done in, in bigger cities and are scalable to that. In Austin, they're talking ten gigs today, a hundred gigs in the future. This has the same capabilities depending on what people want to use, and that's really a function of changing electronics. It's also a self-healing ring, which means that it will know where it's cut. Now, it may take us a while to fix it, but we'll, we'll, we'll know where it's cut, the distance, and then we can reroute traffic either north, southeast, or southwest, depending on the cut. This will all be done with the Fujitsu equipment and the electronics is, is very advanced. So, that, I think that's important because in the last few months, or let's say last eighteen months, a fiber cut in the area has almost paralyzed the community when it comes to cell phone service, business, small business having to run credit cards, banks having to do transactions, ATMs. All those are run by, by broadband networks. And so, we want to make sure that anything we do has a high level of reliability. Additionally, Kit Carson is working with a third-party vendor to, to bring in, and they're bringing them in, we're just bringing the services. There seems to be a plan to bring several cell towers into Taos County and surrounding areas. And that is, again, to enhance the, they do see a market here that hasn't been served, it's really underserved. And as these big companies have saturated, other places are looking for places to, to serve. So, we have submitted two proposals for about eighteen cell towers to serve them. And so, those are other, again, other benefits that the community gets because you have a fiber network. And again, they need a lot of fiber, a lot of capacity, and then we bring the power to, to that. that.
Councilmember... Hold on. Going back to your comment about the redundancy you have leaving the community and feeding into the network, within the community itself, let's say, for example, coming in from Amalia to Taos, is there a redundancy there to, in case something gets cut, or is it a single transfer?
So if it's between Taos and, let's say, Amalia, and it's cut somewhere in the middle, traffic will transfer to the I-25 Denver corridor.
I'm talking about the residents, because residents from Amalia would be coming into the hub here in Taos, right?
No, the second level redundancy is that every substation the co-op owns, we're putting a mini head-end there. So in Amalia, that substation will have its own head-end. This will be the main, that will be the redundant. So if it's cut, traffic will flow north, but then that head-end then takes over. Takes about no more than twenty-four hours to find and fix this, so we've designed it that we have backups for twenty-four hours from other providers until our certain network gets backup. So every substation we have will have a mini head-end in it for redundancy. Exactly for what you're saying, is that if it's cut, the residents don't hurt. And again, we call it self-healing, because it heals itself, it tells us where it's at, and then it's a matter of us just getting the proper resources to fix the fiber cut.
Thank you.
Luis, under those same, I met with CenturyLink. As you know, a couple of times last year, this community was, you know, virtually lost, since we all depend on technology so much, especially those in business with, you know, internet access, and also the ability to charge for credit card machines and the dependency on internet. CenturyLink seems to be, have one trunk lane coming into Taos, and they were having problems with that. So I met with the officials on there to, you know, one, as mayor, sometimes we want to know firsthand what is, what our options are, and when these, we're going to get the service restored. So it's great to see that we're going to have now some options, that people are going to have some options, but since this is public monies that funded this stimulus funding, part of that requirement, I understand that they brought this up, that they were going to have to partner up with other internet service providers to provide that redundancy within the providers. I know that right now, I think the only ones that were up were TaosNet customers, and that's because they're on my tower, receiving signal from Colorado. But is there, has there been talks with yourselves and CenturyLink and the other providers to provide that service, if you will, partnership, I guess, within the providers to, because at the end of the day, you know, I think it's providing that service for the customers at the end.
So Mr. Mayor, before, besides the redundancy that we're creating, that will basically eliminate CenturyLink, we're also in negotiations under confidentiality, we're negotiating services and rights to our network that they can utilize. Now, we haven't completed those, but they're in the locations that they need, they go right to redundancy. So, you know, it went pretty good until the session started. I think they just slowed down during the session to see what's happening. But again, our goal from both CenturyLink and Kit Carson is, I mean, summer, to have some arrangement completed, so that CenturyLink can get on our network.
And I think that's great for the consumer, no matter who they choose, that there'll be some redundancy in the event one or the other has problems.
Exactly. And really, and just to close, I think, besides all the benefits that can come from this network, basically how we use it, you know, during the course of this project, and again, not including the electric side, as far as the construction, we expect in 2014 to contribute about five million dollars in grocery receipts, because we're going to expend everything this year. The whole project will have, had to have been seven and a half million dollars in grocery receipts to, I guess, the state of New Mexico, and then they distribute it to different locales. You know, overall, Kit Carson on the electric side has contributed about thirteen million. So the operation itself over the past five years, including the broadband, and it's, not even its propane division, has contributed twenty million dollars in GRT. We've also, about two million dollars in franchise tax, and we do have an agreement with the town of Taos, that when we start offering services, we will be sharing in those proceeds to a franchise to the town. And if we can get the take rates, we think, we think that those numbers can double, because broadband seems to be something that people are really asking for. I mean, it's price-sensitive, but at some point they'll buy it, even if the price is higher, because that's just the way we operate today. So I think there have been other positive benefits during the construction that I think sometimes get untold, and I think it's important that the community know that this project has benefited local people, people who have rented restaurants, gas stations, anything that our contractors have participated in, and also in the long term, has contributed to the economy, to Taos, Taos County, and the other two counties we serve. So with that, Mr. Mayor, if there's any additional questions, or sign for any questions, if there's no other comments or questions.
Councilmember Gonzalez.
Luis, thank you for the presentation. It's a really, really comforting thing to hear, how far we've come along. Also, I want to say thank you for your insight and your service with regards to our electric co-op and what you do for Taos. Anytime I travel across the state, even across the country, I get it all the time, and saying, what does your co-op manager do that we can't do anywhere else? So I think it speaks volumes to what you bring to this community.
Yeah, he's thirty years old.
I want to say...
Can we have him removed, please?
This is all political, it shouldn't be...
Mr. Northrup.
Luis, so the one thing I want to commend you for, and say, you know, give you my extreme thanks to, is the fact that you did put a lot of local contractors to work, especially during a time in an economic downturn when housing was at its worst. And I've seen this firsthand, because it's the industry I work in, not necessarily within the broadband, but from the contractors that I've, you know, dealt with directly, and just passing and asking them what they're up to. And almost every single one of them says, we're working on broadband. And to me, that says a lot, because we're in this for the long haul, and I think this little stint in between helped us, through this economic recovery, to, rather than these individuals being unemployed or having to seek employment outside of Taos, this money is staying within Taos. And that's huge for us as a local economy, and for our families that reside within here, not to mention that the rate that's being paid is pretty decent. It's paying a good living wage to a lot of these contractors. I wish it was permanent, but at the same time, they're building a skill set that they may be able to take on somewhere else. So thank you so much for everything that you've done, thanks to Kit Carson, and again, all the rate payers as well, that support the endeavor. So thanks for the update.
Any other comments, questions?
Luis, Councilmember Langra.
I'd just like to say thank you to you and your staff for what you're doing. You're, you know, bringing new jobs to our constituents, you're bringing a better economy, and more long-term jobs of maintenance and these kind of things, the redundancy. We won't have these large blackouts like we've had before, and, you know, that directs to individual businesses who have, who need broadband to operate. And as someone who was on the phone with CenturyLink for two hours the other day, I'm very excited to have a new market opening up. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Thank you, Luis, I appreciate it. Thanks for the update. Thank you very much. Okay, at this time, I see some individuals on the citizens forum. Who is here about the parking meters? If it's okay with the council, I'd like to move that item up, because it's kind of way into our agenda, and I know many of you folks have something to do. So I'd like to move that up right after our citizens forum, if that's okay with the council?
Okay.
Motion to move up that item. And a second. All those in favor, signify by saying aye. Those opposed? Now, we'll go to the individuals that are not, I'll allow public participation under that item, but right now, we'll continue with the citizens forum unrelated to the parking meters. Matt, welcome. Mr. Foster, welcome to our meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and members of the council. I'm here once again to ask for your commitment to implement the policies and requirements of the Bicycle Master Plan, and once again, to make your staff accountable for also implementing those policies. Many people in the community rely on bicycles for health, for recreation, for transportation, you know, young, old, alike. When I worked here, I wrote the Bicycle Master Plan, and I had been approached by many people in the community, saying, well, when is the town ever going to get bike lanes? And I said, well, the town council adopted the Bicycle Master Plan, maybe you want to go to a council meeting and advocate for the implementation of the Bicycle Master Plan. So at that time, my supervisor, Bill Morris, he came in and shut the door and says, you know, Matt, you're pissing people off with this. Well, okay. So I decided to back off on being an advocate for implementing the town council's policies, because I was working within Town Hall, and I got the very clear message, shut up. This is not your place to be doing this. You're pissing people off. So now that I'm on the outside looking in, I can take, I think, a stronger advocate role, and ask you to, you know, for the fourth or fifth time, to make a commitment to implementing this plan. I try not to take it personally, but I can't help but think, you know, of all the eight years that I worked at Town Hall, that somebody could take the plan seriously, and especially the staff. So here, I'm, again, for the fourth or fifth time, asking you to implement your own policies and to keep your staff accountable to it. That's why I quit my job, frankly, Mayor, is I got tired of beating my head against the walls of Town Hall as a long-range planner, only to find them sitting on the shelf, as this one has. On November 12th, I was here, and I asked the same question. There were several roadway projects on the agenda, and I asked the council to please, you know, consider the implementation and make your staff accountable. Your manager said, all of the projects on the agenda comply with the requirements of the Bicycle Master Plan. So I did a public records request, and I got a message from the town clerk that no records exist. The policy is very clear that the Bicycle Master Plan requires a bicycle level of service calculation. So either your manager's lying to you, or he hadn't read the plan, and that bothers me, because I wrote the plan. It's hard to believe that your manager, who has claims to have a master's degree in planning from the most prestigious institution in the world, doesn't know the plan. I find that very troublesome.
Real quick, have you requested a meeting with the manager?
I have not.
Okay. I would urge you to do that.
I'm not interested in that, Mayor. It's beyond that.
Well, that's where you make things happen, really. I mean, that...
Clearly not.
Well, I disagree with that. Okay, go ahead, continue.
So, just final summary, I think I made my point. You know, I'm here once again to ask you to make another commitment to implementing the policies of the Bicycle Master Plan, to have your staff accountable for that, because I'm hoping that we can have another ribbon-cutting on a roadway that actually complies, and that it's actually done, because bicycles are really important to so many members of the community who can't drive or won't drive for health reasons, or whichever. So that's why I'm here, and I hope next time that we can have some celebration as to the, you know, improving the roadways in Taos. Thank you.
Matt, real quick, with regards to the Bicycle Master Plan, it's something that I have supported, what roadways are you thinking of that have been constructed that haven't been met under that master plan?
There are several on that agenda. Everyone since I've ever worked for the town, I know that for sure. The one is Old Taupah Canyon, I think that's the name of it, by the movie theater. Whether the design and construction of the roadway meets the bicycle level of service requirement, we just don't know, and that's the point, is that the work hasn't been done. We don't know what it is. Maybe it does comply, that would be great, but we just don't know.
Is French here, Mr. Mayor? French.
French, going to come up.
With regards to the Old Taupah Canyon, the one, the road that we just fixed the drainage issue with, right next to the movie theater, do we know what our ingress and egress is for that roadway with regards to being able to stick a bike lane in there?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, as you well know, that project wasn't a roadway project, it was a storm sword project. However, it's nine hundred foot, and width does comply, and it does serve at about a Level Service C, only because of the width, but because of the length of it, it doesn't require a designated bike lane. There are some other factors that are involved in that. One is a very in-depth study, it's a traffic study, where tubes are actually put to count traffic on Gustarv and on 68, and of course, the entrance to the area of businesses, which in this case are the theater. Not having the budget to conduct that, what we did was, we used other information that was provided by NMDOT, and made an assumption, but again, because of the length and the width of the roadway, and because it is a newly constructed roadway, it does meet the criteria as set forth in the, it doesn't?
No. It requires a Level of Service B.
In the policy that Matt developed.
Okay. What I'd like to do is maybe have a discussion on the, on, maybe on an upcoming agenda next month, French, on some of the roads that we've built, and maybe some of the ones that we have in the future, the projects, and what is our plan to implement this master plan in that? And does the, is the applicability of the road and the width, because I know sometimes the width doesn't allow for the level of bike paths that we would like to have, but I would like to see, are we making an attempt to follow that? I would like to see, you know, if that's a part of our plan when we're designing roads.
Absolutely, Mr. Mayor. Again, because of the length of the road, that does not require a designated bike lane.
Sure.
Mr. Mayor, if I could, I think the whole thing here is, and the policy within the town is that regardless of the length of the road, we do need to consider bicycle paths. I don't care if it's twenty feet. It needs to be, as part of the project, if we can do it, we should do it. And part of that's going to be affordability, I understand that, but I'm just saying is that I think this is the question that Mr. Foster is asking, is that, you know, that as part of the policy, it doesn't make any difference, the length or the width, the width should be, tried to be determined to allow for bicycle traffic, regardless of whether it's a Class B, or C, or an A, or whatever it might be. I would think that because of the speed on that road, and the width of that road, I can't see why we can't accommodate some bicycle lanes on there.
Okay. And, yeah, so on an upcoming, you know, I know this wasn't on the agenda for full discussion, but I'd like to see where we are. Are we, you know, at least looking at that vision, or that bicycle plan?
That would be much appreciated, Mayor. That's what I'm asking for.
Sure. And also, I know that we're going to be doing some major construction projects on, I think we just signed about five million dollars in some arterial roads that lead up to NM68, and what is our plan there? I'd like to kind of see what we're planning on doing there, and also with NMDOT, that's going to be resurfacing Paso del Pueblo Sur, and to see what their plans are in adding a bicycle lane on that.
Thank you, Mayor.
Mr. Mayor, just one last question. Matt, real quick, with regards to, I'm not real familiar with the ABC levels that we're talking about. How much of that factors in with regards to liability, liability back to the town, if we don't have it, yet we institute it? What does that mean to us? I guess my concern is the in and outs of the two main businesses that serve off that road, well, three actually, which is the Public Service Company in New Mexico, the movie theater, and US Bank. And, I mean, just seeing how traffic moves through there, I just want to make sure that the city is in a position where we aren't held liable for pedestrian accidents.
Well, I'm certainly not an attorney, I can't speak to the legal liabilities of it, but for me, it's just a political liability, where you have adopted a plan, you've approved policies, and the work isn't being done. So for me, it's a political liability, I can't speak to the, you know, if there was an accident or something.
Oscar?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, when Mr. Foster came here in November, you asked if the projects that we were considering under construction included bicycle lanes, and I said, and actually, you asked it, and then you left. And had you stayed here a little longer, you would have heard clearly the answer, and that was that yes, all of the projects, at this point, the roads that we're considering constructing, Salazar Road, Estes Road, if I'm missing a couple, French, please speak up, all of those roads, Mr. Foster, just to be as clear as possible, all of those roads will comply with the town's bicycle lane policy. You had asked me this personally as well, I mean, on a different note, I said yes, as I said yes now. And so to come here, sir, and somehow say that I wasn't truthful or somehow you got different information, I would just have to say that's not correct and it's perhaps another motive that you come here. I'd like to hear that. I would like for you to share that with me because at this point, I understand what that is and maybe that's how we could be a lot more productive here.
Sure. My motive is very simple and clear, and I made it very clear, is to ask to implement the goals and policies of the plan and to make you accountable for it. I don't agree with you. I don't recall saying that the construction roads and so on, and for sure, I know I did leave, but as I was leaving, all of them do, and there were numerous ones on the project, so, you know, on the agenda.
As you see, the council is fully supportive of making sure that we do have bike paths and we'll make sure that we're on target with that. And if there's any concern, feel free to give me a call and I'd be happy to reel it in if you feel that it needs that.
I appreciate it.
Okay. Thank you.
Just one comment, I have a question, Matt, but I believe Paseo de Canyon East happened within the last eight years and Paseo de Canyon East has some tremendously nice bicycle paths.
It does.
And so the town is working hard to implement paths. Sometimes we're not able to because of money or based on the limited width of the road, but I can guarantee you that as a council, we are fully committed to putting in bike paths.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, under the Citizens Forum, unrelated parking. Ma'am, welcome. Now I'll get to you, sir. I'll get to you. Welcome.
Thank you. Mayor and council members, Cynthia Arvidson with Habitat for Humanity here in Taos, the executive director there. And what I wanted to talk about is a house that is at 25 Lamento del Coyote. This is a home that is co-owned by the town of Taos and the county, and it's currently being used for storage. We're building right next to it on number 26 for our 29th partner family. And at one point, there was talk about this house being donated or somehow us acquiring that to put a low-income partner family in that. We are having a partner family orientation on March 6th for our 28th house that was in Cuesta. That partner family is no longer going to be able to reside in Cuesta. So we would love to be able to try to get a second family and two houses going this year, you know, possibly rehab that house and get a partner family in there. It's also an issue of, you know, it's not kept up and our new partner family's looking at it and even our visiting work groups have said, "Well, why does that house have stuff in it? Why isn't there a family in it?" And some of the windows are broken. So I'm just here to see if I can put a bug in y'all's ears and if there's something that, you know, I could help make this happen. We would love that to happen.
Mr. Mayor, I asked this question last year as to who owned that house? But I was told at that time it was just strictly the town's. Is that correct or not correct?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, that house is co-owned by the town and the county by a very odd coincidence. The town gave that house and a number of other properties to the county a few years back. The county, for whatever reason, was not able to or did, for whatever reason, did not complete the necessary paperwork to transfer the title over to them. In the meantime, they built a house, actually, we transferred the lot. Meanwhile, they built a house on it and then they used that house to store all of the records. You'll recall that article about missing records from the Housing Authority, well, they ended up being there. And that's what's there.
Excuse me, that house did have a resident in it.
Ah, well, I...
It was not built by the county, it was built by the contractor that went under it. Because I know, under the cross fence.
Okay.
And that's one of the questions I was going to ask you, when are you going to be back on that, on the new house? But anyway, what I'm looking at in discussion was to, that we did have at that time, was to see if there was some way that we couldn't get it transferred over to Habitat for Humanity to do something with. But it was a repo.
It was a repo by the town that we gave to the town?
Evidently. I don't know how the town acquired it, but it was definitely a home that was being lived in and then they disappeared and all of a sudden, I saw records in the house from Taos County Housing Authority.
Brad, do you recall how this, the whole housing deal?
Oh, yeah, I recall the specificity and I've talked to Cynthia about it. I'll tell, told her the same thing I'll tell you. The county still owes us money for the lot. It's 27,000, 21,000 bucks. That's the town's interest in it. We have a lien, they owe us money for it, they haven't paid us. Since last year, we have been asking them to pay us, they haven't. Don't expect them to in the near future.
So you're wanting to have the town convey the title? Is that what you're looking for?
That would be great and we could rehab it and get a low-income partner family.
But this problem, excuse me, this negotiations or this joint partnership has to be resolved, you see, because we can't transfer it to you because we don't own the structure, the improvements on the lot. And so that, at some point, they have to either give us the house or we find a way to give them the lot so that somebody can then finally convey it to you.
What has been their formal response on this?
Stone-cold silence.
The usual?
Yeah. Yeah, I myself handed the key to Rick Bellis at the time. I mean, you recall, we handed him the key, here it is.
So we have a key and a lien, that's what we have, that's our interest in that.
Okay. If we can set up a meeting or have a letter from myself to the chairman so that I can see if we can expedite this, there's absolutely, for the amount that's owed on the property or the amount that we're talking about, there's absolutely no reason why we shouldn't be able to resolve this.
That would be great. I appreciate that. And Mr. Peralta, we start next week with our visiting work group, so we'll be back over there working on number 26.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you for the great work you do.
And by the way, this work group will be staying at the Youth and Family Center.
Pardon me?
Your work group will be staying, will be keeping them at the Youth and Family Center?
No, they'll be staying at Our Lady of Guadalupe.
Okay.
They visit the youth center, but they're not staying there.
Oh, okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Under Citizens Forum, sir, welcome to our meeting.
Thank you, Mayor and members of the council. I just have a few words. I'm going to try to be as nice as possible. I'm going to read a letter that I think Oscar Rodriguez has, and it's from Pete Di Meneggi.
Junior.
And junior, yeah, not senior. But anyway, he's writing this letter on December 4th. He adopted a resolution. And let me read the letter. It has come to my attention that the town of Taos has passed an ordinance resolution, 1341, on 12/4/2013, which is close to getting close to three months already. There's an attachment there, I think the attorney has it also. It is my understanding that Taos has failed to take steps to comply with the ordinance as described in the attachment. As a result of those failures, the town of Taos violates of mandatory ordinance and violation of Clean Water Act for unpermitted discharges to waters of the United States. This letter re-estates the previous CWA citizen suit notice. I guess I'm kind of disturbed because I've worked with French quite a bit and with Oscar and I applaud French for all the hard work that he did putting this resolution together. I had worked with other previous, but French really got down and he put an ordinance together that was an ordinance that the wastewater treatment plant could work with the waste haulers in receiving their sludge, which was going to be from four, from eight to four. And what bothered me is that the last time I was here with the council here, I don't really believe that you folks even looked at the resolution or even thought how it was going to be paid to go from 77. I do remember Mr. Peralta saying, "How are we going to pay for this?" And my question to you is, how are you paying for something that's out of the hours of operation that the wastewater treatment plant operates, which they wanted it from four, from eight to four? I guess my question is, Mr. Mayor, is who has stopped this resolution from going forth? And the next question would be, who's paying for these extra hours? I personally believe it's 77 would be the taxpayers paying for this extra hours. And actually, this is a private septic companies. The town of Taos getting involved and paying for 77, I believe the town of Taos would be spending 2,000s and thousands of dollars for this operation. I did speak to Anthony, which he is back there. He told me they would have to hire two full-time employees to be able to operate this type of operation. My question is, who's paying for it? That's a big question mark to me because it seems to me that it's going to be something that taxpayers would be paying for. And it's something that it's a private company and I don't believe the town of Taos should be involved in financing private companies to be in business. It is good that the town of Taos is able to receive, the wastewater treatment plant is able to receive septic from the haulers. It's needed. But to go beyond is my question, who's paying for it? And right now, as it stands, the wastewater treatment, I guess I'm going to, I want to really talk direct to the Mr. Cordova, the mayor, is that the wastewater treatment plant, if somebody sabotaged it, would ruin our drinking waters and would ruin the plant. Right today, there's a drain, I don't know if Mr. Peralta knows about it, there's a four-inch drain that anybody can walk to that four-inch drain and drop a chemical and ruin our wastewater treatment plant. It doesn't have to be a terrorist, it just has to be somebody that's not really right in their mind. But I'm just asking you, why has nothing been done? Why has this resolution passed, but it just stays there and it's still 24/7, the operation is still the same? I'm just wondering, why is it not being protected?
Okay.
That's all I really wanted to say. If you want to answer to it, fine.
Okay. Well, I'll make some comments, but it's not intended to have a lengthy discussion because obviously you've engaged in an attorney here, but I can tell you that every hour that that wastewater treatment facility is open, the town of Taos pays for. And the services that we provide are specifically to provide that service and it comes funded from us, whether it's through this resolution that it's going to increase the demand or the hours of operation to accommodate a service for constituents, not only within the town of Taos, restaurants, not restaurants, but residents in the town of Taos and within Taos County. It's our obligation to do so and that's why it's called a regional wastewater treatment facility. But I do take offense to your comment of somebody wanting to sabotage the wastewater treatment facility. The last place anyone is going to try to go and sabotage the wastewater treatment facility with a chemical is at the facility themselves. They would just simply dump it in somebody's toilet, somebody's private toilet in their own privacy.
Okay, so...
So, no, no, I didn't interrupt you. So, you know, I think that, you know, we take this very serious, that, you know, that we want to have a managed way of accepting the sewage haulers, that it's a service that we need to provide. We don't allow them to dump in arroyos, we don't, you know, allow them to do that. So they have to have a facility and it's our responsibility to provide a safe and clean facility to do that. Now, if this resolution, if it's not being followed, this is the first I hear of it, I will make sure, as mayor...
I appreciate that.
...that we're following, you know, the protocol that this council has unanimously followed and we'll make sure that we're in compliance with it.
Can I answer back now?
Sure. Well, I don't want to engage you into a discussion back and forth.
No, all I'm trying to interject is the safety of the wastewater treatment plant.
Sure.
It's because a terrorist can actually do it through a toilet, but what I'm trying to say is that there's no fencing and there's an open drain that they can sabotage it. Doesn't, I'm just trying to say is, we should protect the wastewater treatment plant.
Absolutely.
That's all I'm saying.
Yeah, absolutely. And we'll make sure that we do everything we can to do it.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Any other, anyone else under the Citizens Forum? Welcome to our meeting.
I'm going to start this. Mr. Cordova, in his reelection political advertising, claims the beta settlement and work associated with the airport will generate, quote, "well in excess of $150 million in grants and economic activity." There is a pending grant from the Federal Aviation Administration for, I believe, $24 million, which leaves $126 million still to account for. You claim a figure in excess of $150 million, Mr. Cordova, and toss a figure about with ease, so you must surely know the component figures that total in excess of $150 million. Will you break out those figures for us now? Can you do that? Or do you actually know them? It's a rather simple question, Mr. Cordova. Where did a figure in excess of $150 million come from? Who is the author or authors of such a claim? Mr. Cordova likes to talk of partnering up. He did just, he did so just a short while ago. Taos County asked in a letter to the Department of Finance and Administration dated 21 May 2013 for their assistance in explaining and understanding income and expenses associated with the public safety access point, emergency dispatch, which was a responsibility and still is a responsibility of the town. Would not a good partner offer such information freely? Why wasn't the town forthcoming? Why was it necessary for the county to seek DFA assistance? This is, here's the important paragraph from, this is the letter dated May 21st, 2013, to DFA from the Taos, from Taos County. "We ask that through its local government division, DFA perform an audit for the last three years of the income and expenses of the public safety access point operated as fiscal agent by the town of Taos. In light of learning that the JPA partners, Joint Powers Agreement partners, have been charged for an operation that handled 88,000 calls, only 18,000 of which are E911 calls, it is important to understand what the JPA partners have been paying for. To this date, I don't believe DFA has responded to the county's request. Why would Taos County submit to binding arbitration under the auspices of DFA to resolve questions concerning the location of emergency dispatch when DFA hasn't even responded to the county's request for assistance? Forget binding arbitration and forget DFA. Elizabeth Warren, a recently elected senator from Massachusetts, has warned us of the corporate demand that we give up access to the courts and submit to binding arbitration. No way, Mr. Cordova, no way, Mr. Abeta, no way, Mr. Gonzalez, no way, Mr. Rodriguez, no way, DFA. With respect to the repeaters, Mr. Cordova and Mr. Rodriguez have both said the town is not responsible for any of the repeaters outside of the one in Canyon, I believe, used for dispatch within the town. You both rely on the Joint Powers Agreement for the substance of your claims. Can you tell us, you know, just exactly which section of the Joint Powers Agreement it is that you rely upon for this claim? This is a report dated April 18th, 2011. It's an assessment report for emergency management. It's under the auspices of the New Mexico Department of Homeland Security and Emergency Management and the Statewide Interoperable Communications Working Group. The executive summary says, "This assessment report is to determine the current state of the public safety communications system." On page four, it says, "Overall, the local resources indicated that the repeaters had never, at least in their memory, had maintenance to the site or the repeaters." This is April 28th, 2011. "Based on photographs in the possession of the Taos Police Department, there is considerable concern about facilities, grounding power, and tower conditions at all sites. While listening to the frequencies, there is also a possibility that the settings on the duplexes or repeaters need to be checked." On page seven, under infrastructure, it says, "The repeater network is essential to the daily operations of the county/municipal public safety agencies. Failure of any one site could be disastrous. Concern over the lack of maintenance on these sites is extreme." Concern over the lack of maintenance on these sites is extreme. Creation of a schedule to check the sites at least twice a year is paramount. Site maintenance should include tower inspections, building inspections, and cleaning, power inspections, especially for the solar sites, R-56 grounding, coax, and radio service." If the town believes that it's not responsible for maintenance of these sites, why was it negotiating a contract, or at least has, was working on a contract, and I assume it's been consummated, TT 1355, between the Town of Taos and New Mexico Municipality and Valcom Inc., here and after contractor? Whereas the town is found necessary to retain the services provided by contractor, and whereas the town desires to engage contractor to provide said services, and whereas contractor desires to provide such services under terms and conditions in the contract, therefore it is hereby mutually agreed by and between the parties that the scope of work for seven repeaters and additional work for all of them. And it lists four or five recommendations, requirements for each site. I'll just give it a couple. Flag repeater site, relocate radio repeater and other related equipment to existing repeater enclosure. Amalia repeater, replace radio to compatible Kenwood. North repeater, replace the batteries and evaluate the charging unit." So if you're negotiating a contract, and this is, the report was in April of 2011, this contract is dated, or has a date on it, August 2012. Why would you be negotiating less than eighteen months ago, a year and a half, why would you be negotiating for a contract to maintain repeater sites if you don't believe that you have the responsibility to do so? Gracias. And your tactics, Mr. Cordova, are pathetic. They are those of a pathetic politician, Mr. Mayor.
It's really sad. Oscar, what does the county owe us for emergency response and dispatch?
Three hundred, excuse me, eighty-nine thousand dollars. And by the way, over the years.
Mr. Stevens. Mr. Stevens.
Hall.
Hall, I'd like to address that comment with you.
What comment?
Well, the fact that you're putting it on us that we don't maintain the repeaters.
He's not a commentator, he's just, I'm just quoting.
I think, I think what we need to do is just, it's clear that Mr. Hall is not interested. With all due respect, Mr. Hall is not interested in learning the facts. He continually, I've asked him to meet with me, and he has not taken me up on that offer, and this is from a while back. So, we're going to move on with the meeting, and my office, no, 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 I didn't interrupt you, I didn't interrupt you, I didn't interrupt you.
Right, but you just said, you asked, you never, you never asked me.
When you were at Town Hall, when you were at Town Hall harassing our staff, I asked you that I would meet with you at any time. I asked you to do that. And the offer still stands so that I could clarify, the chief could clarify any of the issues that you have and concerns. I would be happy to go through all of those concerns that you have because you are very, very misinformed. Thank you.
But Councilman Gonzalez, to answer your question, this year, they're in arrears some eighty-nine thousand dollars. And over the years, as those repeaters, as the need for those repeaters and the cost for maintaining those repeaters came up, and the town and the county considered making repairs, et cetera, the county was one-hundred percent or fifty percent partner with the town, deciding what was spent, what was not spent on those repeaters. And so it wasn't until, it just finally got to a breaking point that we decided that it either had to be completely addressed, and it had to be addressed by the responsible parties, but to just continue this facade that we had where somehow we were, over the years, held to be responsible for the repeaters, but we didn't have a partner that wanted to actually fix them, finally had it, it had to be resolved. And this is the way it got resolved, and I think it's, it's finally on a good track where the county assumed through a memorandum of understanding the responsibility for the repeaters outside of town limits, and we assumed responsibility for the maintenance of that one repeater up on Canyon.
Now, Oscar, with regards to that, was that because of the fact that when we had this joint powers agreement executed, and we had certain areas with certain repeaters that, for example, we were getting $10,000 a year for maintenance of that repeater with an $11,000 bill to the city with regards to maintenance?
Yes, sir.
That it was at that point, the breaking point started with the county, so I'd appreciate if you get your facts in order, Mr. Halls.
I have facts, I agree.
I check their budget and see how far they are behind, and why we're left with the circumstances we're in.
Okay. No, we didn't interrupt you. Okay. Thank you. Next, we will go on to the next speaker at this time. This is not a, it was not an agenda item, so we got to be careful to go into too much discussion with that. Anyone else under the actual citizens forum wishing to speak at this time? Seeing done, we will go on with our agenda, and we did suspend the rules to accommodate everyone. Thank you for being here, and thank you for your patience. We will go on to item B, 9B, discussion and possible direction to staff regarding the parking meter, the parking for the historic district. Members of the council, as you may be aware, we passed during the budget process, an increase to the, a different structure on our parking, and we did receive several emails from downtown merchants that it just was not working, and it was working in an adverse way to them. So I immediately asked our manager to reach out to the merchants, and I really want to appreciate Mr. Jay Moore for taking the lead on that and really getting the merchants together so we can hear their concerns in a larger group. And just keep in mind that any, as I've mentioned before, any policy that we make is that the intent is always to create an environment for businesses to succeed. Obviously, we're hearing from you that this isn't, isn't the case, and that's why this is on the agenda, so that we can change that. I think we already changed, we already changed the two-hour to four-hour. It appeared that there was a large consensus from, consensus from your group that they wanted to see it from two to four hours. And now the question is, we're at a dollar per hour, does the council want to take it back down to fifty cents where it was? I think that it's appropriate for Mr. Jay Moore to give an initial presentation since you've had a pulse as to what's going on, Mr. Moore. But I think the council is very eager to hear the concerns of the merchants and yourself.
Mayor and council, thank you all for having us and hearing our concerns on the meters. Obviously, the reason everyone's here is, they love this town, and they love living here. And this change that we've had with the meters has had a negative impact on lots of our business. I think everyone here and all the merchants also recognize we're in an unprecedented weather pattern and situation, which is including a lack of tourism that we usually depend upon. During these slower parts of the year, especially in the January and February and March, we would be able to depend upon a lot of our locals. This meter change that went into effect in approximately November, is that right, Mr. Rodriguez?
November, yeah.
Okay. It, we feel that it's counterproductive to our locals and to their budgets. Fortunately, we felt also the two-hour time limit wasn't sufficient for people to do their shopping and spend the time properly in downtown. So what we did is, we gathered, our first meeting was a small meeting with just the John Dunn Shop merchants. That brought in about forty merchants and representatives. And what we decided from that meeting was to conduct a merchant survey. So myself and Colin Stevens from the G. Robinson Map Shop, we literally walked from shop to shop through the downtown area, all of the historic merchants, and presented them with a five-question survey. And in that survey, we were asking them if the changes have been positive since the meter hike for them, or whether they were negative. We then asked if they felt that the hourly rate from one dollar to fifty, from fifty cents to the one dollar was hurting their business in any manner. Also, did they think that the decrease from four-hours duration parking to the two-hours was sufficient or not? And in each one of these cases, we had anywhere from eighty to ninety percent requests stating that they wanted the price to be returned from one dollar down to fifty cents. They wanted the parking rate, the duration to be extended from two hours to four hours. There also was a concern with the metering of the Loretto lot. We, also speaking with Mr. Rodriguez, another thing I think we need to clarify on the metering of the Loretto lot is just exactly how much of the lot is going to be metered, and when that metering is to take effect. But we had an over ninety percent response rate that did not want the Loretto lot metered. But one thing we did not address at the time in that question, I think that was an assumption, is that we were possibly assuming the entire lot to be metered. So we would like to seek clarification on how much of Loretto is to be metered. We'd like to seek clarification upon when that is supposed to occur. Then we'd like to request removal, taking the hourly rate from one dollar back down to fifty cents, and then taking, continuing, we've already approved for it to go from two to four hours. Also, all of the merchants agreed, we would like to seek a long-term parking plan. And I think that that, we have an opportunity here to resurrect a Taos Merchants Association. I know that there's been associations before. I think we have an opportunity here with all of the merchants cooperatively getting together that we should resurrect that, so that we as merchants can work more closely with the city in developing a plan that works for the city, achieves the city's financials objectives with taking care of the issues of rent, et cetera, and also that allows us to continue bringing customers into our shop.
Great. Any questions for the council members? Councilmember Gonzalez?
Thanks, Jay, I appreciate it. I attended the meeting with regards to the parking meters, and it was a great turnout. I was happy to see a lot of people there. And in a lot of circumstances where we make decisions like this, and I know what was said at the meeting too, that there was very little participation, so thank you for at least rallying up and coming to speak to us. I would like to see, Oscar, just an offset, and I know we go through it during the budget process, and I know it's constantly changing with regards to the Loretto, with regards to the church, and what their yearly asks and wants are, whether or not it turns into a full privatized parking lot, or we keep leasing it and doing things with what we've done. So, much like you mentioned, the Taos Merchants Association, I think, would be a good harmony between the city council and, and the merchants themselves with regards to getting a true understanding as to what we pay for our lots, number one, and how we offset those costs with regards to maintenance. And, you know, Oscar mentioned a book that I just very briefly read the summary on, which was The Cost of Free Parking, and I'm sure you, you've seen it too, and the fact that there really is no, no such thing as free parking. Somebody pays for it somewhere, it all gets eaten up somewhere. So, Oscar, I have no objection, Mr. Mayor, with regards to right now. The other thing I'd like to see is some type of planning done with regards to the peaks and valleys, and maybe in those areas where we can reduce levels of the cost of parking and increase in other areas. I don't know, I'm sure it'd get maybe a little costly with the reprogramming of the machines, but there's, there's got to be a common ground for all of us that we can, we can come to a win-win. As a governmental entity, and as somebody that has to look at the budget from a standpoint on this side, I don't see government as a money-making entity, and I don't see us as a for-profit corporation. I see us as somebody that needs to provide certain things to its constituency. And with regards to that, I just want to see that, you know, we, at the very least, break even on these parking meters or parking lots. And I say that because of the fact of, I know what the maintenance is, and I know what the lease cost is. So, I think there's some harmony there, Mr. Mayor. I don't have any, anything wrong with going back to the fifty cents an hour. I would like to see something implemented more, you know, here coming in the near future with regards to getting a true overall picture as to what those lots cost us, and at that fifty cents an hour, based on historical rates, what that means to us back in revenue to at least do the upkeep on those lots and pay for the leases. If that's okay with you, Mr. Mayor, I don't, I mean, I'd like to hear from the rest of the council as to how they feel as well, but that's just some things that I've, you know, come to terms with, with regards to the whole issue.
And I think that right now, we're looking for an immediate, immediate solution, and then, but the long-term solution is a, is a well-thought-out master plan, parking, downtown master parking plan. Because there's a lot of concerns out there. There's, and they go from, we should always have it free, to we should charge, you know, more, there should be more turnaround. I think, you know, it's just so dynamic, the ideas that we're getting to even some, which I liked what I was hearing that day, of perhaps some type of token type of situation where if you get a citation and you show a receipt, you don't get that citation. However, that has some legal issues that, you know, only a judge can forgive a citation. So, and I don't even know if he can do that in exchange for a receipt that you, from a, from a, from a merchant. So we're going to research all of those. I would like, also like to see a kiosk that perhaps makes it convenient. I think all of our reasoning for being in this room here is, how can we make it more convenient for the shopper that's coming, the tourist that's coming, or the local person that's here? And perhaps, they may, you know, get intrigued by one shop here, and then they go to another one, and they stay longer. They may run into someone, and they may decide to sit down and eat before you know it, the clock's ticking on their, on their parking meter. And it would be nice to have a central kiosk in different convenient locations that if that amount passes, they can go and actually pay that amount. You know, they could pay that amount that they extended their time, rather than get a harsh, rigid, you know, enforcement of a citation. So, you know, I think there's a lot of things that, but right now, I think the immediate thing that we're looking for, council members, is, you know, do we take it back from a dollar to fifty cents? And, but the long-term solution is getting a downtown master parking plan.
Yes, sir.
Councilmember Abeta?
Thank you, Mayor Cordova. Ladies and gentlemen, merchants specifically, and Jay, you and I spent the last couple weeks going back and forth with emails. And remember that as elected officials up here, we are here to enable you to succeed in your business. We're not here to put up roadblocks, we're not here to hurt you. We made a policy change now that appears to not be working, so I also support going back to fifty cents as a short-term solution. And then we'll hammer out, together, we'll hammer out a long-term solution that will work for everybody. In 2007, as a sitting council member then, seven years ago, I actually supported eliminating all parking meters in Taos. Unfortunately, there was not a majority council that wanted to do that. So, this issue has been in front of us for ten, fifteen, twenty years. It's probably going to be in front of us for the next five, ten, fifteen years, but we definitely need a long-term plan to solve the issue once and for all. But if we, if this governing body tonight decides and gives direction to staff to take it back to fifty cents, we now have a term, short-term solution to help you so that you can succeed, and then we can work together, roll up our sleeves, and try to hammer out that long-term solution. So, Jay, thank you very much for converging with me.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, if I could just mention one more thing. Jay, it was mentioned at that meeting with regards to a kiosk, an actual credit card kiosk, because I, as much as anybody else, when I travel, the one thing I hate to do is go leave my parking space to go look for change, to only come back to find either a ticket, or worried that I'm going to get a ticket. Especially, and Taos is a little bit different, because you're, it's more a leisurely stroll typically when I'm out and about, I'm going to a meeting. So I would strongly encourage, Mr. Mayor, that we try to find some type of kiosk that would accept credit and debit cards, and allow the individual that's parking to choose the amount of time they want to be there, so they aren't pressured to constantly running back to feed a meter. If anything, you know, Santa Fe has them, the parking meters that have the credit card readers directly in, in it. I mean, in today's technology, I don't understand how we're still, you know, feeding a meter with a quarter. So just, if I can give a direction to staff to at least research it, look at it, I know there's issues there with offset costs and whatnot, but I'm sure there's ways around that we can, we can get through it.
And that's what I believe, that a council between the merchants and the city officials, we could better determine those things together, because with convenience comes increased cost. And I think what happened here is we arbitrarily increased the cost, but didn't increase the convenience at the same time. And so with that, we now require customers to walk from shop to shop, looking for change. So I think that getting together, we can look at these many different options between credit card machines, token machines, or even looking at the options of free parking. But the drop back to the fifty cents would allow us to get back many of our customers that have possibly gone away because of their fear of receiving a ticket, and then allow us to create this, if you want, an advisory council between the merchants and the city so that we can start evaluating these options and making good decisions for covering the financial cost associated with those lots, and utilizing the resources we do have as a smaller town.
Good. I kind of liked the idea that I heard at that meeting of a volunteer system. Well, it just seemed, you know, I heard that somewhere else, they've tried that, and some people have actually found that it's successful now. I don't know if that, you know, that would work, but clearly, I think that the recommendation that, you know, I would, you know, based on what I saw. know, based on what I saw at the meeting, and the councilmember Gonzalez who were there was, is definitely take it, take it back down to the 50 cents. And with immediately, with a process also of making it convenient to even get that, the 50 cents as well, you know. I think the county said that they were willing to house a change machine inside their courthouse, so that it would be safe at night and stuff. So, I think definitely that would be the short-term solution with, with an idea that we're not gonna get it off of our radar to continue the long-range parking plan, parking master plan.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Councilmember Silva?
Just a few comments. Just a few comments. Councilmember Abeyta, you visited in 2007. You also visited in 2009. I was part of that. And so, then, you know, we all acknowledged, as we do today, that, you know, the cost of free parking, like Councilmember Gonzalez stated, you know, there is a cost associated with that. And I too believe that government should not be in it to make any additional monies, but just cover its costs. So, I too am in agreement to go and take it back down to 50 cents and try to look for a long-term solution. But I'm afraid that this is gonna have to be continuously looked after, depending on the changes, just as it has been 2007 today. And I believe it's gonna just be something you have to continuously be looking at. So, the forming of a committee, I think, is a good idea.
Thank you, sir. To reference the gentleman's book that he was speaking about, The High Cost of Free Parking, Donald Shoup is seen worldwide as the leader in parking research and understanding. He advocates the raising of prices for parking to control overcrowding issues, especially in large, dense, metroplex populated cities. He also indicates that the city must set a bar, a percentage of use for a lot or parking spaces. Usually, he sets it at about 85 percent. And if this lot falls below use of 85 percent, he then advocates that you've reached your price elasticity, and you need to bring your price down to bring back those people to that lot. One example is, I believe it's San Diego or San Francisco has employed one of the most sophisticated systems in the world, and it's which meters actually talk to themselves and monitor the spot. And they will, they will move the price of the lot up and down themselves based upon parking use. So, they know that if there's not very many people there, they will decrease the price all the way down to 10 cents an hour. Then, they can also increase it up to, you know, 15 or $20 an hour if the demand is there. But that's for a very large city with extremely large budgets and resources. But what it shows is that they understand that this is a process that has to be met multiple times, that will change because of economic conditions and other conditions that we just can't foresee at this time. So, we have to find some way to make ourselves a little more elastic and responsible to the changing economic conditions, instead of just saying, we can set it at one price and stick with it. But we've also got to be able to establish some consistency, so that we're not just constantly changing and moving. And then, the individuals coming wouldn't know what to constantly expect. But I think we can find some standards and stability now that we've got the attention of the merchants and the city as well.
Mr. Mayor, and I think that this forum committee can evaluate that. And like I said, you know, it seems to be moving all the time, and depending on the needs. I mean, originally, the first meter was called a parko-meter, and it was invented in Oklahoma City, and implemented there by some, by the city, working together with the local college. And there, what their problem was, is that the merchants themselves were parking alongside the curb side, and this kept that from happening. And also, they did a study where, on one side of the street, they didn't put any meters. On the other side of the street, they did. On the side of the street where they did, the merchants experienced a bigger turnover of consumers coming to their stores. The opposite side of the street, those merchants, after a while, were asking for the meters. So, I mean, there's, there's an intent and a purpose, and they do work if they're, if they're applied properly. So, yeah, I think it's something you have to just continuously look at.
Yes, sir. Thank you, sir.
Councilmember Peralta?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, if I could, if we can go back to the budgetary process and what was anticipated with the increase in the parking meter fees, and the implementation of enforcement was to generate enough monies, not just to pay for the parking lots and their, their costs and the maintenance therefore, but also to create a fund for the downtown historical district to do a number of things to increase the traffic there, whether it be programming, or whether it be uplifting of the, upgrading of the capital improvements that are necessary there. But it was trying to provide a fund that we don't have any funds anywhere else that can do that. If we drop back down to 50 cents, that fund goes away. And all we're looking at is doing is providing, paying for the parking lots and the maintenance, and the downtown is not gonna have any funds to do any kind of promotion or improvement to it that we anticipated was a necessary thing in order to help the merchants there to gain more traffic and that. So, that's the trade-off. So, it just depends on what we want to do. And I'm just saying is that I feel that we need an awful lot of work to be done downtown, both in marketing, in, in things that we do that will drive traffic, such as Thursday Night Live. We need to do more of that, and other things that we need to do. But we don't have the funds to do it. And this was a means to try to provide that kind of funding for that purpose. And it's, if, if we were to hit our target, this means about $200,000 a year to the downtown area for things that the merchants feel is necessary to improve their business as well. And so, I'm just saying is that if we drop this back down again, and this is the reason I voted for improving it, was because I felt that now we had a way to put some money in the downtown area that has been so desperately needed to improve everything down there. And going back on this thing is going to take us, I think, in the wrong direction. That's my personal feeling about what I've seen over the years in, in the demands that have been justified by the historic district to improve itself and to drive some traffic. And just, in a sense, we just haven't had the money to do it. And I felt that this is the way to do it. And I'll give you an example. Back when I was mayor, the money that was taken from the parking meters was used to pay for raises to the police department. So, if the police department pushed it, and gave them more money to, to do that, and that's not what we're here for. We're here to see if there's some way that we can provide some guaranteed revenues to that area that will help with improvements. So, I would love to work on, on a, on a master plan, or, or anything else. But I think one thing we have to keep in mind here is, how do we generate revenues to support the downtown area, to make it better, and make it more inviting to both locals, as well as the tourists that come in here? And so, I would hope that you would keep that in mind, and, and that was the whole intent that we had when we put this thing together.
Mr. Mayor, real quick. Thanks, councilmember, for bringing up the fact that, you know, a good part of that plan was to, was to raise enough funds to, you know, to move through the ACD. The problem with it is, is that it's kinda like the scenario with the cat that catches the bird. You get the money, but what do you do with it? You know, and I think part of that is the, the implementation through the ACD, the problems we were working with through the ACD, and actually getting the merchants on board to see, you know, and ask the questions as to what you see out of the downtown. I mean, you guys live it, breathe it, and, and work it. So, I think, you know, for me, it's saying, again, this 50 cent drop, I would ask to be, you know, short-term, until there's a true identification of the needs of what you, what you, the merchants, want to see happening down there, whether that's, you know, doing something different with the downtown gazebo, or, you know, we, we don't know. To raise funds and not have a purpose for it is, are two different things. And I had hoped that the ACD would have been on board by that time, Oscar, we had talked about this, with regards to turning over revenues to them. I still don't see, even now that the county's taking them, I still don't see a comprehensive plan with regards to direction, because it's you guys. It's your, it's your vision. It's, it's your direction. And until we get that and we see that come back to us, you know, I do have a hard time, you know, doing anything different, just besides, besides sitting on a pot of money.
Correct. Yeah, we, I think everyone recognizes that, and they understood that the intent was to generate more money for the historic district. And I think we all recognize that by going back down, we will be taken away from that ability to do that. I think that part of that also is recognizing, we view this as a temporary Band-Aid, in light of the current economic situation, and the lack of the snow, and this, this strange situation that we're in. So, I too agree that we view it as a short-term, almost a Band-Aid-type solution, and then to open up ways to get back to bringing that money back in through a different way. I think that, you know, it's, it's the cost of getting that money as well, that we found out that may not be working for us, is are we running off those same customers we need to generate our GRTs? And that's where the problem has been. And so, I think with, by partnering some of Mr. Shoup's information, but then also take into account our very different circumstances of a small tourist town, we can find a much better solution. The key to his approach that I think we need to follow is the percentage of lot use. If we can find a percentage that we all agree with, and we're able to achieve that, then we can move our prices up, as long as people will pay that price and keep our lots full. If they don't, then we need to pull that price back down, and we'll find where that price elasticity is. So, I think that the cost of changing the meters would ultimately be relatively small in terms of the GRT that we're able to generate by keeping our lots full as much as possible year-round in a tourist location.
So, I guess, you know, you have, we have to find a balance. And, you know, while our intent was clearly to provide that infrastructure dollars-
Yes, sir.
-and generate those, we also have to weigh heavily, what's, what's affecting your businesses? And is that creating a negative effect? And are we now shooting ourselves in the foot because the ability to generate that GRT that could allow us to perhaps increase our general fund, that's what our source of income is? So, we have to find that balance. And, you know, I feel here that, you know, while we have to make those tough decisions, we also, we also need to weigh heavily on the people that are affected the most, and that is the merchants at downtown, so.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, and given that, I make a motion that we give direction to staff as a term sort solution to go ahead and reduce the dollar fee to 50 cents, and that we establish a committee made up of merchants and others to come up with a long-range strategic plan on parking.
Mr. Mayor, can I add to that motion with regards to Mr. Abeyta? Can we make it date certain with regards to the formation of this committee, so that it happens extremely quick as to, we're not all just sitting on the ball?
Within 30 days, if we can have a-
Is that possible, Jay?
I agree.
An update at the next council meeting?
Sure.
Sure. And I guess I would just ask our, our town attorney, what the, what the process would be, the notice process, if there is, is any, to lower the fees, you know, from a dollar to 50 cents? I mean, what do we do now?
Well, we don't really have the parking rights set in the code, so I'll have to do some research on the resolution. If it's a resolution, we'll have to present a resolution to modify that.
So, the idea then, to comply with your direction, we'll come back with you, to you with the resolution and, and the concomitant budget adjustment as well, so that we can take care of all those things at the same time?
I'm advised by the clerk that this fee was set when we adopted last year's budget, so that process will have to repeat itself, and that'd be some kind of amendment to that.
Yeah.
Okay. So, there is, there's no way that we can make this effective immediately, correct? Since it was a resolution, can we, since, and we're here, and we duly noticed this meeting, can we make that, this change effective as soon as possible, rather than having to wait for another meeting? I, I thought that it was an ordinance that we had to duly notice another ordinance. But I think direction, can we give direction to staff now to change the fee immediately?
Well, theoretically, the only people that would complain about it are you and the rest of the council. So, if you don't care, we don't care.
I just do, I just do wanna make one, insert one sort of basic, a negotiable fact here, and that is, we have to program the meters. And that does take a little time. And the way it works is, we, we order a, the program to be sent to us from, from a device, that then we sort of charge each of those meters, and that will take some time. So, in terms of immediate effect, that would be, you know, that, that's just gonna take some time for that to happen. Perhaps, perhaps one thing you could do, though, that could be done immediately, is for us to just not collect, I mean, just suspend the meters period immediately. And, and that way, it doesn't take anything at all from, from the, on a, on a short-term basis. I mean, if the idea here is on a short-term basis. So that you can just have, have the meters, if you will, sort of stickered, that, that they're not operable for right now, until, I guess, we make, make the change.
I think that was a big concern by some of the merchant-
Mr. Mayor, if I could, we don't have a second to this motion. We can't discuss it till we get a second.
Second.
Okay, there's a second. The, I think there was a concern by, by merchants that they didn't want it free, that they, some, some didn't really want a carte blanche free parking lot, 'cause it created employees parking there. Am I correct by that survey?
In the survey, we didn't specifically ask if people wanted it for free. In the, in the choices, we just asked, would you want the metering fee to be at $1.50? We had some write-ins. They would write in that they wanted free, but we didn't feel at the time that that was probably realistic to expect of the council and the mayor to approve going all the way to a free metering system. The concern, obviously, even in a short term for free metering, is the abuse by merchants. The metering somewhat does police merchants ourselves. However, in light of the strange situation we find ourselves in with this weather system, I certainly think it's a good idea to consider for the month of March, for the, the meters to be sleeved, and we go with free parking. However, the merchants would have to acknowledge that we are truly policing ourselves at that moment. We no longer can sit there and call the police and say, hey, merchant X has parked in front of my business for the past three hours. Could you please come remove them? So, there is some issue with that, that we would have to answer. So, my question, I think, I think the better solution is to go to the 50 cents and the four-hour.
And just be patient.
However, how quickly we can get that meter, Mr. Rodriguez, in general, how long do you think that would take to obtain that?
I would turn the question over to the guy that I asked to order the device and change the meters. In fact, we're waiting for the device now, even to change it to four hours.
Four hours.
Correct, yes, sir.
Mr. Mayor, councilmembers, Mr. Manager, Jay?
Welcome.
We did order, the Duncan Solutions is the company that, that had the meters that we had previously, and we bought mechanism replacements to match the housing, so we could save money. We can program all the meters. They're all on the same, they're all the same kind of meter now. We did order a meter handheld device to change to the four-hours. We expect to get that probably tomorrow or the next day. But it's not programmed to, to reduce the rate, so we'd have to ask for another one. The reason we do that is because the cost of the software and the cost of the handheld device are, are very high. So, instead, we rent one for $350. So, we'd have to ask again tomorrow to have them send a second one to make additional changes.
And Steve, how long will that take?
About a week.
So, Mr. Mayor, I would say that we ask that this be done within two weeks. A week to get the software changed, the key, and then another week to implement. Would two weeks work, Jay?
Yes, sir. If, if I may, if we receive the one meter to move it from two to four hours, could we go ahead and implement-
Absolutely.
...that immediately, and then wait for the other metering device to come-
A week later.
...and then do it as soon as it returns?
Well, just real quick, Mr. Mayor, if I could, what cost implementation is that by having to reduplicate service on the meters twice?
It's a $350 rental fee for the handheld.
But what about staff?
We have two staff, on my staff and one on the police department, that know how to do it now, because we-
And it takes them a full week, so we'd make one change?
No, no, it'll, it'll take one day. We can do it in three to four hours.
The entire-
Yes, sir.
Good.
It takes a week to get the device-
It's mostly getting the device programmed and getting it sent to us.
So, so, councilmember Abeyta, just to be clear, would you want to end your motion?
Yes, I was gonna do that, Mr. Mayor.
End your motion?
I hereby amend my motion that this action take place within two weeks from today.
Is that okay with your second?
Second's okay.
Under discussion. Councilmember Peralta?
What is temporary?
I believe, was it Mr. Gonzalez that you mentioned, by the end of March?
No, that's just to set up the committee.
Oh, okay, just to set up the committee. You know, this is historically a very slow period for us anyways, running all the way into April and May. I think, this is certainly without speaking to the rest of the merchants, so I kinda semi am speaking on their behalf, and I'm sure others might want to speak as well. I think that if we give ourselves a 60-day timeframe, being March and April, that we should establish a committee, and then, in that other month, we should be able to come up with a plan of, do we feel that we need to maintain that 50 cents, and we could stay with it for a time period until a more long-term solution is established? But in agreeance with the merchants and the city, or at that time, or- But in agreeance with the merchants and the city, or at that time are we ready to return to the dollar if other, you know, requirements are met such as convenience, change machines, et cetera, et cetera? So I would think, I think a 60-day window of March and April, end of April. Sir?
July 1st?
Yes, sir. I would think that that should be realistic.
Do you amend your motion to make it temporary till July 1st?
Absolutely.
Okay, with your second? And, you know, clearly the intent is to make sure we keep our eye on this target. The council is not saying that we're going to take them up. We're going to weigh heavily on the, on the, this committee that will actively be engaged with the merchants to look at the recommendations, whether we keep it there or, as you mentioned, have a systematic process to implement a, perhaps an increase, but with a component that adds for that convenience on there, so.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Any other discussion? Let's take a vote on this and then we'll see if there's any other comments from the audience. All those in favor?
I think we should have comments to be honest before we take a vote.
Okay. Is that okay with the council?
I'm okay.
Okay. Yeah, just wanted to, the council, the audience may not have any concerns after the voter's taken, so. Because I know it's been late, so. Anybody want to speak on this issue? I think we've spoke a lot about it, but we're anxious to hear about you if you have anything additional to add to it. Seeing none? Just want to thank you all for coming. Okay. Ma'am, just state your name for the record, please, just, yeah.
Kristen Fettalini, I own Parking Company at the Dunhouse. I think I just want to go back, Jay. Thank you very much. You did an excellent job speaking for all of us. But I just want to touch back on something that Jay did mention about the Loretto lot and about how I know back in 2007 it was metered and then it wasn't working or something, so they were, the meter heads were taken off. So he had asked what the timeline was, if you know the timeline, for when these meters are going to be put onto Loretto, if that's the case, how much of the lot would be metered? Because in that survey in which Oscar, Mayor, and also Councilmember Gonzalez also received a copy of the results of the survey, it said 98% of merchants and employees that work in the historic district would rather have that lot free. I don't know if that would be taken into consideration or if the Loretto lot is already determined to be metered, and if so, how much of it?
It's be part of the master plan.
Yeah, this should be something we discuss with the committee. However, what is the, is there an immediate plan now to meter it?
Mr. Mayor, Members of the Council, you recalled you in the budget process that the, the decision only was to, to repair, if you will, the existing system, make it work. We had a lot of meters that just didn't work. And so we replaced those and we only bought enough to replace the ones that didn't work, not to put any new ones. And so that was sort of one of the decisions or one of the pieces of the plan that the intention was to share with the, with the merchants. So no meters were ever bought for that. I guess the direction of getting here is to not buy any more meters and not put any meters on there until we have a, some kind of a plan that I can bring back to the council. So that's, that's I can say in terms of the horizon there. You'll, you'll be included in some of that, those discussions.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. And I think that when the committee convenes, I think that should be one of their, their considerations that they look at is what are we going to do with the Loretto, Loretto parking lot as well? Okay. Any other comments, concerns, ma'am? You had your hand up? Okay, okay. Well, thank you all for, if there's no other comments, thank you all for coming here. We really appreciate your input. Thank you so much. Thank you. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
You vote?
The vote?
Okay, we do have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you. Yeah, thank you. Thank you. Okay, next we will go to item A, monthly, departmental monthly performance reports for informational purposes and possible discussion.
Mr. Mayor, I have nothing to, nothing outstanding to report there. For us, the financial report is part of that performance report and so we really have nothing there to, to keep us from going straight to the financial performance report. Unless, of course, you have any questions or any suggestions. We're always very interested in hearing what you think about those things.
Any comments, questions? Okay. We'll move up to the item B, financial update, presentation on the monthly, monthly financial report for period ending January 2014. Marietta, welcome.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. I'll try to keep it shortened to the point because it's late and I know my eyes are even tired, so I can imagine yours. January's financial report, grocery receipts tax for the month of January was up 0.13%, so pretty much even from last year's figures from 12, 13. Increases, categorical increases, construction around $8,600 and retail trade at $8,500. Some decreases, finance and insurance, $10,000, and other services, $10,400. Year-to-date, we're at a 4.2% increase, but based on our projections that we have made, 1.8 through the end of the fiscal year. Just to know that we already did get February's receipts in and this is the first time that I've seen a million dollars on that note for probably several years. So February is looking good, but staying with the projections that we have right now. Maybe next month's report will be a little bit different. So right now, still have our, our 30, 50-days fund reserve built up to 50 days with 1.4 million, 1,468, 1.4 million dollars. Capital projects, some of the notable ones, we did a, actually, a communication center relocation has been completed, but paying out one quite big amount to a vendor, clearing that up at $73,000. $240,000 for 100% substantial completion on Old Tapacanion. On the money side, the project's been done for a while, but the money was paid out in January. And also $67,000 to complete us, 82% for the first phase of the pre-development of the affordable housing. So that was one big amount that we paid out also in January. Other than that, you can see the revenue, the revenue expenditures on the second page for general fund and our projections are based on our mid-year approval that was done in February, but I've already included those in this report here. And special funds, pretty much just in a summary and I'll stand for any questions if you have any.
Councilmember Avita?
Mr. Mayor, just one comment, Marietta. Looking at January's GRT, it looks like our GRTs have stalled over the previous five months, so hopefully February will be better.
Right, and that's what I had said, February was really actually a big increase. Actually, I have it right here. Sorry.
So do you have the number already?
Yeah, I already have the number, sort of behind the, by the time we close the books and have the next one. For the month, it was actually 9.8%.
So, good.
And-
December wasn't such a bad month for-
No, December wasn't bad either. Well, December was-
I'm sorry, but what you're looking at in February is actually-
December.
Receipts for December.
Yes.
I'm saying December wasn't such a bad month for merchants.
Right. No, it was really, really good.
Christmas.
Yeah, really good. True statement.
Okay. Any other comments, questions? Thank you, Marietta.
I'm just going to stand for the next-
I don't see. The financial update and five-year budget plan for enterprise funds.
So, Mayor and Council, we have, we have brought back to you a couple of the funds that were requested. We did the five-year projection plan for general fund and these are going to be for lodgers' tax fund and also for water and wastewater enterprise funds. So we have the presentation. I did send you an update and in between the update and we did find some corrections that we needed to make on the lodgers' tax fund one, so we went behind the scenes and did that really quick before we came back to present. So if you can, first page that we'll go to is just our actual budget assumption, same as that we presented for general fund, not the same, but in the same format. For our lodgers' tax fund, we're looking at a 2% annual increase in revenues and in expenditures. We have a total funding of the marketing program, expense from lodgers' tax revenues. I think the plan was we've contributed from general fund for the last few years of approximately $132,000. So now that the lodgers' tax revenues have been, have increased, we can fully fund the marketing program that we are existing now with all lodgers' tax money. And also with the convention center repurposing to U N M, we have some savings there, approximately $82,000 annually that will be used for the marketing program. So all of these changes have increased those revenue sources to the marketing program. And in the water and wastewater enterprise fund, our revenues are based on a 6.3 annual increase based on a rate study implementation that we started in January of 2011. We're doing a 2% annual increase, assumption of a 2% in expenditures, and we've also allocated $300,000 per year plus annual inflation adjustment to the asset management reserve account. And that was all done, developed when we did the rate increase study in, in January of 2011. And just a note of balance of $2.7 million after five years of that reserve account. And that's not to say that that's where it will be, but that's if it, nothing is done in the asset management program. So once we have that program going, those funds will be expended to the priority of whatever needs to be replaced in its most need on the water and sewer part. Capital expenditures are based on a five-year, our five-year capital improvements plan and all appropriations expensed in the scheduled year according to the table when you look at it. So those are just our basic budget assumptions on these two funds. So, I'm going to read here. So based on our approved budget, our amended budget, which is reflective of all our mid-year budget adjustments, our annual revenues to, for lodgers' taxes now at $968,000 for this current year. Based on the percentage of allocation, you can see on the chart that the convention center gets 10% of those allocations, visitor center gets 30%, marketing gets 40, and transportation gets 20. So those are just the allocations based on the lodgers' tax revenue. So based on that, you can see we also get an, we use a 5% administrative fee to manage the fund that covers our audit costs and other incidental things that may come up within the administrative fee cost. So we take that and, not saying that we can always use that also for additional marketing monies if needed or if requested, I guess. So you can see the breakdown for each year, where the $968,000 going forward, you can see for every year how those allocations are distributed. If you have any questions, just stop me. Because I'll just keep on. So based on, of the different, like visitor center, they get their own allocation als, they get their allocation and they always also have additional revenues that they generate from the visitor center. So we just have in summary, I guess if you just see the last amended budget, they have revenues of $185,000 and their scheduled allocation and their budget expenditures of $452,000. So along the way, marketing is the same type of summary. They get their lodgers' tax allocation and then they get the convention center transfer monies now into their budget, thank you, to cover their expenditures.
How much are we, our net, since we still kept the employees and we transferred them to other departments, how much are we, is our net savings by repurposing those buildings?
The salaries of all those individuals for this convention center have always been in general fund, so they are al, they're, they're already allocated into general fund.
Yeah, but we used them for other, other vacancies so that they were allocated, you know, they were absorbed by other departments, so what is the net gain that we got?
No. In other words, Mr. Mayor, you're asking, the question here is, if you don't differentiate between what was funded through lodgers' tax and just said everything that it cost us, whether lodgers' tax or general fund, and the convention center, what was the net savings from relocating?
I'm just going to think of employees and if there was maybe possibly three employees, that would probably be close to 150, 200,000 on three employees.
Plus then utilities.
Plus the utilities and supplies and-
Safe estimate, maybe 250, 300,000?
Probably 250, 300, probably 300.
Yeah. That's not including maintenance.
Right.
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 Okay.
Of course, we didn't lay anybody off. There was one position that became vacant that we didn't fill. So those, those positions, those resources just went to other parts of our maintenance effort in the city.
Right. So you'll see the marketing, the marketing program for the current amended budget fiscal year, you'll see we're at $411,000. Going into next year, 14, 15, we are funding the whole marketing program along with other advertising costs that's in that for the full amount out of lodgers' tax. So that's what that's showing out going for the next five years. You can see a little slight recurring amount that's a little bit less than the reoccurring revenues. And based on however the revenues come in, we, you know, the additional amount will more than likely go to marketing to continue the program as it is right now, funded what we are right now. The other fund that is part of this is transportation. Yes.
Going back to, sorry. Going back to the lodgers' tax promotional balance, is that what that is? I'm not sure because it's covered up. I want to make sure I got the right word.
Yes, it's a-
You have a growing balance in there, up to in 2019 of $400,000?
Right. If you-
According to statute, you can only keep two years or you have to give it to the state.
Right.
So how are we figuring to be able to generate a, a surplus?
Actually, we didn't, we didn't take that into account, so we will have to revise that because that is a true statement after two years. So based on that fund balance, we'd have to recalculate it and separate it out according to its allocations. So that is not included in this.
So we would actually, let's say by 2019, we could take $314,000 of that and throw it into marketing?
Yes. Well, we'd have to allocate it to its appropriate people, but in the sense that maybe transportation does not need it, that's what we did at mid-year. If they do not need the whole allocation, then it, then first thing is marketing.
That's correct. So you can move the funds around between the different-
Right.
-areas that you, you set up as long as they meet the criteria for promotional monies out of the lodgers' tax. But what I'm indicating here is that, is that the way the statute's set up, we can't create a surplus.
Right.
We've got to spend it.
Yes.
So we're going to have to change this forecast going forward and determine how we want to allocate those reserve funds, but we can't keep them or we lose them.
Right. You're right. Thank you. Same thing, transportation has its own allocation, additional revenues is their state grant funding or any capital money that the town puts in for any capital purchases that we need to meet. And then convention center is just really running it in as a, the allocation and then small revenues that they do generate from this facility here that they're still using and using the excess amount not needed back up to marketing. So those are all the funds associated with the lodgers' tax and how they're allocated.
Mr. Mayor, if I could, are we allocating funds to this facility from lodgers' tax?
This is part of the smaller convention center, so we are and we have. So you'll see-
It's also, it's also generating revenues.
Right. It's generating approximately 15, we're estimating 15,000 in revenues based on the information I received from facilities.
And you're allocating $92,000 in lodgers' tax?
We're, we're, we're allocating $92,000, but you see we're transferring pretty much 82 of that amount back into the marketing program. So we just showed this more to give you a picture of how much savings that the convention center is not using and is distributing back to marketing.
But shouldn't that in the, in the future budgets that you have here go to zero or close to zero rather than showing that money in there?
It, it actually is showing, well, there's not a net, there's a zero balance at the end, so it's just coming in and going out. So there's no reoccurring balance on that, on the convention center. Do you see that bottom balance?
I'm looking at every, every fiscal year you have an allocation.
Right.
We shouldn't have an allocation if we're not allocating.
Well, and we may go back to look at the, the ordinance and change that to be specific, I guess, to what it is, because right now in the ordinance it is-
I mean, if, if that money is what you're going to be putting into the budget for marketing, this one has to go to zero. We can't show it twice.
Right.
So, I, I mean, yeah, I understand what you're saying, but I'm not, it's not duplicating anything. We're just showing it so that you can see how much is actually going to marketing now. We can change that to, to be a direct allocation to marketing and not to convention and back out. out.
Yeah, unless there's, unless there's a small amount that you're gonna still be using in this facility, which would be justifiable, but...
Right.
...not to the tune of, of what...
Right.
...was going across the street.
Right, and you can only see that $25,000 where it says, "Transfer to general fund", that $25,000 is the amount that is needed to continue this facility. That's the only amount that we're using out of that allocation.
So, so basically...
But that's general fund, not lodges tax?
Because they're budgeted into general fund.
Yeah, so, so basically, the operation's taking some of $25,000 plus the $15,000 in revenue.
Right.
And as it goes. And, and again, what we weren't doing here is presuming that you would change the ordinance, but if, if you guys are thinking that we would eliminate this category as one of the, the transfer destinations, the fact is, a big part of the cost is labor, the most, the biggest part of the cost is labor, that's already in the general fund, so it's not like it's...
Well, that, but that's what I'm trying to say, is that if she's using it to, to budget what we're using from general fund into the marketing budget, then this needs to go away, and the other one needs to be increased that way, and so that you have apples for apples.
Yeah.
And, and that's all I'm, I'm asking for, as far as how we continue the budget out over the years.
Okay.
So, when we make that change, I guess, which will be in the budget process when we approve the budget, and the five-year budget plan, these numbers need to be reflective of, of what we're actually doing.
It'll be a lot cleaner, that's for sure. A lot fewer manipulations.
Okay, and, and I understand, you know, I'll look more into, and, you know, change those up. But really, the $25,000 cost here is just utilities really for this. Everything else is already in general fund, maintenance and everything else. So, that 25 is really the utility cost and some general maintenance in here.
Okay.
So, that's the only piece that we're covering of this. So, do you have any questions in regards to this slide now?
Any questions, comments?
Thank you.
Okay, and two more.
Yeah, the next one is even more interesting.
This is the...
Even more interesting.
This is the water and wastewater fund, and so really what we've done, same processes, we've put reoccurring revenues versus reoccurring expenditures. So, if you can see, going into the expected amended budget, our current total revenues will be this year $3.3 million. Total available revenues with our beginning cash balances, $4.6. Our operating expenditures, $403 on an annual basis for debt service and reserve accounts. We have seven debt service loans with USDA, and then we have two other commitments that we have for the new era funding. And then the asset management reserve account that has built up so far to $721,000. So, going forward, you can see the same thing with the 2%, the 6.3% increase on the revenues and 2% on expenditures. You're gonna see this fiscal year, our reoccurring revenues versus expenditures are a little bit higher, but we have some one-time costs in there that we will be using, and then we've taken them out for the, for the additional years. So, that's just the water and sewer enterprise fund, just in a real quick overview.
You may want to just highlight your...
Oh, yes, I'm sorry.
Your asterisk there.
My two asterisks, while the two one is that, does that not, that does not include any funding increase for the operations cost for the ordinance regarding the septic hauler operations?
If I may, Mr. Mayor, if I may, just so that everyone understands what, what's, what's in there, or what that assumption means, and that is, it refers a little bit to what Mr. Rael was talking about earlier. It's, it's his assumption that with the new ordinance, that we have to have a person there inspecting and observing every time a truck goes there. And our, the interpretation I've taken from that is, is that's not the case. We, we have a fence there, there's, it's a gate, it's not the, the most modern-looking gate, but the, the OMI staff closes it at 7:00 in the afternoon and opens it 7:00 in the morning. Now, they're, they're gonna be giving us a bill for overtime for that, but it's not nearly the, the, the big bill to have somebody there, you know, nine hours a day, you know, seven days a, a week. And so, when we first looked at this, we saw all of the costs, and I guess what, what Mr. Rael was referring to was some of our very preliminary costs for what he would've taken to staff that. And I, I asked Mr. Martinez here to, to give us an estimate. He said, "Well, that would require something like a $160,000 amendment to your budget." I said, "No, let's not do it that way. Let's just close the door and open the door and just see how far that, that overtime bill goes." So, we're thinking it's not gonna be as, nearly as significant. And so, anyway, what Marietta is telling you here is that we're assuming we're gonna go with this, the, the low cost or the lowest impact reading of that version, of, of that ordinance. And, and just to be sure, and I'm going a little bit out of the, the financial presentation here, is that we, we believe we're taking all reasonable precautions that should be taken to safeguard the safety and, and, you know, operations and the, of, of that plant. As you mentioned, Mr. Mayor, there's, in a sewer system unlike perhaps any other system, there's just so many, there are endless points at which you could attack the system, that somehow to spend a lot of resources in this one point, thinking somehow that's gonna keep you safe if somebody wanted to do damage to the system, is, is just not, is just not logical. And, and certainly for us to spend, you know, the $100,000 plus, just to, to make sure nobody poisons the plant at the plant itself, forget the many manholes or the many, you know, thousands of places that you can, you can, you can pollute the, the system in, you know, in people's toilet, you know, just through people's toilets. We're, we're proposing, instead of spending the money there, that we spend that money for maintenance. Mr. Mayor?
Marietta, on your asset management account, we're at $721,000 at the end of this fiscal, the next fiscal, this fiscal year.
Yes.
Okay, and then it drops to $300,000. I, I can't see where that other $400,000 went to. And I guess in one way, I don't understand, are we generating $700,000 more each year?
It's actually because...
Out of operations, not, not capital?
Just out of operations, yes, because based on the rate increase, that was the plan, the implementation plan. So, we hadn't really, the 721 is not one fiscal year, it's a, a combined for the last couple of fiscal years. So, now I'm trying to identify and keep it separate, and going forward, it's an average of $300,000 per year, based on the increase of the rates and how they calculated it out. So, that 721 is actually for two, two fiscal years.
So, where is the accumulated total of the asset management reserve?
We, we didn't run it on this sheet here, we just put it as the assumption after this, all these years, it would be the 2 point X amount, $1 million. So, we're really not allocating it to anything right now, we're just showing it, and it will be in there, but we don't show it down into capital until it's actually needed. And it's not part of, it's part of the reoccurring costs or of the money that's coming in, but we're not showing it as a total balance here.
Okay, I, I would like to see all of our reserve account balances.
Okay, and now based with the mid-year...
I'm talking about running balances, in other words, how much we're accumulating in each one of those accounts, and see what that is, so that we get a true picture of what our reserves are for repairs or, or matching funds for future projects and sort of thing.
Right.
And it's kind of hard to tell from this, because that's what I'm looking at, saying, okay, $721,000 at the end of this fiscal year, and then it drops to $300,000, and, but I don't see where it's being spent, so...
Right.
I'm assuming then that it's going into a reserve fund.
Yes.
And I'd like to see how that reserve fund has been growing or...
Okay.
...changing or whatever. So, that, we would look at and say, here's the money that's going in every, every year. At the end, we accumulated this excess and we're throwing it into the reserve fund, and then the following year, we're budgeting out of that half a million dollars to match another grant that's coming in from USDA or, or somebody else.
Okay, and based on mid-year budget adjustments, that's what I did, I actually, I'm pulling it out. So, once I get those funds set up and those amounts in there, then we'll, we'll have a bit, a clearer picture of the reserves and of the asset management and of whatever else reserve account is just in there.
Yeah, and that's the reason I was asking for the figures on how much, you know, in other words, if we have a, a, why can't I think tonight? A, a bond that requires 1.25 match, for example, per year, at the end of that, that 25% is released, and we're either spending it someplace or we're reserving it, and that's the kind of thing that I'd like to see where, how much we're, we're saving from that requirement on, on the match.
Okay.
If I, if I may point something out there, because I guess it hasn't been flagged yet, there is a new line item later on, you'll see in the capital utility improvements, that is related here, and that is a line item that says, "Street repair reimbursement." At the, at our budget retreat last week, there were comments from the council that perhaps we should be making sure that the utility pays for the damage or the, you know, just what it takes to, to, to operate in the streets, because it does deteriorate them. And so, anyway, we're starting to, we're gonna start budgeting that amount there as it is right now. So, that's what you're starting to see there steadily, at least another, another way to put money into the street repairs.
Okay, now, in that regard, Oscar, is that $200,000 deducted from the asset management reserve? In other words, would the asset management reserve really be $500,000 if we didn't put any money in there?
No, it's not deducted from there. It's just part of the occurring, and so if we just go to the capital project side, you'll see the, the main revenue source in there is obviously grants, and you'll see the municipal tax that's just for water and sewer, we've put that in there, and then whatever other revenue sources come in. This first year looks not very well, because there's a lot of carryover money from the previous year. So, if you go to 1415, you'll see that the expenditures for 1415 are only $982,000. So, we aren't using any of the asset management reserve yet into that, because we don't really have the plan set yet on the water and sewer enterprise for those things. So, right now, that 200 is just coming off of the reoccurring revenues from that year.
So...
That's what I'm saying, so if we did put that $200,000 in there, the reserve, asset management reserve would actually be $500,000.
Actually, yes, if you, if you use the, the capital GRT money for that, yes, it could be back up into there.
Yeah, which is, which is not the way to go.
No.
Because we need to have that money in that, in that fund for maintenance.
Right.
So, I'm just trying to look at it from standpoint of saying that we're actually generating, at the end of the fiscal year, you know, $500,000, we're taking $200,000 to do maintenance on outside of plant.
Yeah.
Right.
And so, and that's important for us to do that, because it's a cost to the plant.
Right.
And so, and then that still leaves us a sufficient reserve to match grants and other things that may come up in the future.
Right.
Okay.
Other than, I think that's it. I stand for any more questions, or...
Thank you very much, Marietta.
You're welcome. Sorry, I thought it was gonna keep it short. Oh, well, good, important information that we need to present to you.
You can only keep it short if I don't come to the meeting.
I know. Well, somebody said you were counting numbers or something or others, I said I better be prepared. Thank you.
Thank you, Marietta.
Okay, next we will go to item E, signalized maintenance agreement, consideration of possible approval of maintenance agreement, DT 14137 of the New Mexico Department of Transportation for the maintenance and upkeep of new signalized intersection at Paso, Sela Pogosud and Estes Road.
We would...
We did that. Water funding up?
Uh, no, that's...
We were talking about the water fund.
Yes, we were talking about that.
I saw the wastewater. Okay, item D, update to the mayor council regarding President Obama's farm bill and opportunity to apply for federal funds for the completion of phase four of the Taos Valley Regional Waste Water Treatment Facility improvements.
And, Mr. Mayor, the biggest tragedy of us not being able to talk about that is that we would've had French here all night with no reason. So, what, what we want to just, and this is really just an information, a presentation for you, just because it's, it's of the, the scale or the magnitude of the, of the item. And we're talking about here as, that as the result of the recently approved farm bill, it was, I don't know if you've been following this, but it's been stalled for years, it finally got approved. In that was, was money to pay for capital improvements in rural communities like Taos. When that was approved, the, the USDA called us and said, "Quickly, do you have any shovel-ready projects?" We said, "Yes, of course we do." And so, they said, "Well, but then please send us that, 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 that project so we can, you know, find a way to start moving that money this year." And so, what we submitted then was a sort of an intent to apply. And so, if, if it gets approved, then we'll have, be having to come back to you for an approval to submit for a grant of $2.1 million to do improvements at the sewer plant that we weren't able to do as part of the first, first three phases. And so, anyway, I'll, I'll turn it over to French to explain to you what those items are.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Oscar, I think you've probably pretty much covered it. Mr. Mayor, as part of your attachment to the agenda item is, is this document here, and it just, it's pretty much just a description of, of the, of the four-phased project and what has been completed and when, and of course, phase number four is identified in this as well. And as, as Oscar mentioned, it's, it's our intent to apply for the funding, and one of the, one of the main things that qualified us to apply for this is that we have a preliminary engine report in place, and that's what this is, and it's a pretty lengthy document, and I didn't attach it to your agenda items, but it is available. And pretty much that's it, there's replacement and upgrade to the headworks. That's, that's the first point of entry into the, into the treatment facility, and that's where the septic haulers actually dump their septic. So, in the event that this gets funded, we, that entire system will be upgraded.
So, you recall when this item came up last time, you, you were saying, "Why isn't there this big basin and, you know, all those different sorts of things?" Well, that's one of the things that was left out, we were hoping to be able to, now with this thing, we're able to fund it with, with that money.
Mr. Mayor, if I could, when was the last time that we upgraded the headgate? About 12, 15 years ago?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Peralta, yes, that was one of the upgrades, and just as recently as 2005, it, it did receive some upgrades as well.
So, it's, and the reason I mention that is because that sewage treatment plant is a moving target. You fix it one day, and the next day they change the requirements, and you gotta fix it again, and so...
Pretty much.
The money that's been spent on that is enormous.
Um, yes.
Because I think that, that headgate and that, the deal we did there was about $4.5 million at that time, and then in 2005, you probably spent another $4 million on the plant. And I know prior to that, when I came into office in '94, there was another $6 or $7 million we spent on that plant. So, it's like every five years, we gotta put oodles of money into that thing.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Peralta, since 2004, we, there's been a capital investment of about $7.3 million, and again, that math is on, on your attachment here.
And that doesn't include this last...
It, it does, basically what, what this is, is it identifies 2005, 2012, 2012, and basically I just took the $9 million and subtracted the $2 million from right here, so about $7 million.
$7 million in...
Yes, sir, since 2005.
Nine years.
Yes, sir.
And then prior to that, I know that we did...
There, there was a million dollars, about $1.2 million invested in the, the, oh, the, the plant that was proc, or producing the fertilizer, you know, the class B and class A fertilizer, and that was a...
That was one too many, point too many dollars in a grant.
Yes, sir.
But I'm just talking about the, the plant itself, the, the...
The headworks.
The, the tanks or whatever, you know, the ponds and the headworks, and I know, remember, we had to replace all of the pumps and the recirculating, floating, whatever.
Yeah, right. Irrigators.
Irrigators and everything else. It was a lot of money.
Yeah.
But, and if you look at, if you look at the bonds that we have outstanding, they're all, they're all long-term paybacks. And it doesn't seem like the equipment lasts as long as it takes us to pay off with the way they make us upgrade all the time.
Right.
So this is going to be, as far as you know, is going to be 100% grant? Or do we have to match it?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Peralta, there will more than likely be a match. What, what that is, is dependent on the nature of the project. You know, there's some, some applications that touch on water, which will be a different match than wastewater or even a different match from an irrigation project for, for an actual farm. So it, it depends on the nature of the project and we're, we're, we're still learning what those matches are going to be and how they're going to be, how the funding is going to be allocated to each one of the different priorities.
And right now, Mr. Mayor, if I could, just one last question. Right now, we're only looking at a application for wastewater.
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Peralta, that's correct.
Thank you.
Any other comments, questions? French, thank you. Or did you have stuff?
I'm still on the hot seat, Mr. Mayor.
This is under the update of the water, right? And we're going to go to E, is there's no other questions? Are you, are you still on the?
Well, he's up for number E too.
I'm, I think I'm up for number E. It's very late. Sorry.
Yeah. Item E, consideration of possible approval of maintenance agreement TT 14137 with New Mexico Department of Transportation for the maintenance and upkeep of the new signalized intersection at Paso del Pueblo Sud and Estes Road. The longer overdue signalized intersection.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Again, the, the, what is attached to your packet is the actual agreement. Brian has already reviewed it and given it his blessing. This is a standard agreement with NMDOT for a signalized intersection. I, I did make contact with NMDOT yesterday and they are looking at going out for construction in March and working through April, May, and June to get it complete.
Really?
So, so it is, it is a realistic project that is going to be.
Great.
Constructed by NMDOT.
That's great to hear. Councilmember Peralta?
French, on this, I believe, do we have an agreement like this on all of the signals in town?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Peralta, we have an agreement similar to this on, I believe, four other intersections. And those came about when they were either upgraded or they were revamped to accept the optocom system that emergency service vehicles is utilized. Yes.
So let's see, that would be.
Oh.
Camino Merced, Cuzalta.
Yes. Canyon West.
Cervantes.
And Paso del Canyon.
Okay, the ones in town, they maintain? The one at, at Placitas and the one on the Plaza?
Yes.
The one at Civic Plaza Drive?
Yes. Yes, because there's been no major upgrades or improvements other than the optocom, which was part of a, a larger project.
Or Hale Creek.
What's that?
Or Hale Creek.
That's out of our jurisdiction?
Yes. Yes, Hale Creek is out. Oh, that's a touchy subject, but as it stands today, it's out of our jurisdiction.
Or the blinking light.
It's out of our jurisdiction.
I remember a conversation about that.
Earlier.
Okay, so entertain a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Motion to approve and a second. All those in favor signify with a say a aye. Those opposed, motion carries. Next, we will go to item F, discussion regarding housing for the emergency communications central, center director. Oscar.
Yes, sir. With this, we just want to give you an update on how our, how we're proceeding. At, at the last meeting, we explained to you how we were, we, well, you know, we just cleared with you that we were going to make an offer to the new ECC director that included, among other things, temporary housing, or at least housing at least for a year. And we want to report to you that, that, that offer was accepted, that, you know, that that's sort of a condition for someone who's going to be coming into a, a position that, that could very well go away, you know, in, in a very short time. And so we thought that it was just very critical for us to be able to even make a credible offer. So anyway, with this, we want to communicate to you that, that there'll be a, a number of items coming to the council in the next council meetings that'll then make this effective. And one will be a resolution or amendment to a resolution that you have currently in place that says that that housing at 105 Sunset is, should house a police officer. You recall our police chief was there for some 11 months. And then, so we have to amend that to include that it would be, that it would house a, a public safety person, public safety personnel. And then we would also need to come back as a matter of house, house cleaning later on next month to resend an ordinance that really was, was not necessary anyway, that, that, that requires or that, that provides that housing to, to a person. Anyway, did I get all the points there, Miguel? Anyway, we just, I, we just want to let you know that those things are coming so that as they come, you'll know why they're there and they are very significant. And this is just proceeding with the direction you gave us to, to hire this person. It is a, it is a very critical job and the person who's coming, we're very confident in her skills. And at the same time, we very much appreciate that she's accepting a position.
French, I'll meet you up there.
She's accepting a position that, that comes with a very, very high risk that really we couldn't make to her without being able to also offer, you know, housing. Anyway, that's, that's all we want to say there, just so it's very clear to you about what, what's coming next and what, how we're moving forward with that.
Okay.
That's it. All right.
Thanks, Oscar.
My name. Moving on to matters from mayor and council, 9A, resolution 14 dash 14 supporting public access to Red Hills Road known as CR 009. Resolution is consideration of possible approval of resolution 14 dash 14 to support the need to protect and continue public access. Hang on one second. To the Red Hills Road known as County Road 1009 in Mora County for all citizens. Oscar.
Yes, sir. Mr. Mayor, pro tem. This is a resolution that came to you last meeting and there were some questions about what really does this mean, you know, what sides are we taking on this issue, et cetera? And so you, you tabled it and asked me to, to go back and, and research it and talk to people who are involved here. And I've done that, I, I, over the, over the week, I've sent you some of the, just some of the basic information that I've gotten from it. It, it turns out that our own JR Logan is a, is a, has written extensively on this, on this issue. So I consulted with him. I also talked to Mr. Olono from Ocate, who is, who actually asked us to approve this resolution, has been taking this resolution to all of the communities in the area. And so I do have some information to, to share with you about why, why this is in front of us and, and why the town should, the, the council should consider approving it. What this is, is a, is a resolution that affirms the belief of the community in, in, the Ocate area that county, the Red Hills Road, also known as County Road 1009, is, is a public access road. There is a threat by the, a private landowner there to close it, saying that it's, that it's private property, et cetera. It's a, it's a long story about why he came to that conclusion. Anyway, should he close that, then the, everyone from that area who has traditionally used this road to, to access the traditional hunting grounds will then not be able to access those grounds. And so really, this is sort of the, the story of, of, there's, there's the local tradition, there's a local, you know, hunting, for example, tradition. People come subsequently and buy the land. They don't know those traditions, they don't respect those traditions, they have their own beliefs about how it happens. And so what you have are a local community, local traditions and being blocked by new landowners. And with this resolution, we would in essence be taking the side of the local community. Now, Taos County does have a little history here because apparently back in the, Mr. Olono was explaining to me that back in the, in the 1920s, there was a mill levy that was raised for a few years in both Taos and, and Colfax County to pay for this road. So he's saying, look, if you approve this, in essence, you, all you're doing is just affirming, you know, or, and, and, and supporting an action that, that your community took even back in the 1920s to, to build this road. So with all that information, I have, I can tell you, we would be taking the side of the local folks and based on that, I would recommend approval.
Councilmember Peralta?
I have a couple of questions. First of all, has a county shown this as a dedicated county road for maintenance on the books?
Yes. Apparently it's, it's also on the state, has been for many years since the 1920s, has been on the state record for, for, for maintenance. Now, it's a, it's since, over time, it, it became less and less used and there were other avenues that the community used. And so this one is a, is a, is a dirt, very rough road, but still.
The county is not maintaining it?
The county is not maintaining it. It's a pretty rough road, yes.
So with regards, go ahead, sorry, go ahead.
Or at least not maintaining all of it.
So what proof do they have that, that Taos County and, and Colfax County put money into this road?
Apparently there was a resolution, or excuse me, legislative action in the, in 1929, in 1929, that, that assessed this, this levy of the local folks to build the road in the first place. At that time, there was a lot of lumbering activity and a lot of very small mills that the community had out there. And then, and that road was used for that. And so that mill levy was to make sure that that road was stayed open, stayed open. Over time, lumbering became, you know, uneconomical. People bought the land or sold the, the land that they had there and that road became less used. And so as a result, that road then just became sort of a, a hunting path, if you will, for people to go to, through there to access the public lands. And that's how it's been maintained since then. Other than that, the, as I understand, the county doesn't, there's no infrastructure there. It's just very occasional blading.
Oscar, I guess with regards to this, the questions I have real quick before I turn it over to council is, so the threat is that it will be private or there's a litigation that it's privately owned?
Yes, yes, there's a, there's a landowner. Imagine a checkup of traditional hunting grounds that is checkerboarded, some of it private, some of it public, right? And it used to be that this road connected, well, this road connects all of the, the, the public accesses. One of the landowners in the middle says, no, this road can't go through my land anymore. And that's what the fight is.
So if we approve this resolution, Brian, are we bordering on constitutionality between overstepping our bounds on a private landowner's request to not allow access through their property?
I don't think it's an actionable constitutional violation if it is one. There's no damage.
Yeah, so.
So we're just saying our support.
Yes, sir. We, we would be taking the side of the local folks that want to, this road to continue to be publicly accessible.
Go ahead, councilor.
Is, is the county interested in maintaining this road? Or have they abandoned it?
No, they, they maintain it in this, it's, it's like an old hunting trail. The county maintains it as such.
If they don't put a blade on it regularly, they've.
Not regularly, apparently not regularly. I, I talked, JR said he actually went on that road, took all day to go something like 14 miles. And so it's pretty rough and apparently the hunters, they're, they're okay with that. Their only fight is just keep it public. And even if the county doesn't blade it a whole bunch, they're thinking, just keep it, keep it public access and, and leave us there. So it's not, it's, it's, I guess the best way to think about this is it's not a road per se, but rather a road to a hunting grounds, path to hunting grounds.
The only reason I'm asking these questions, and I mentioned this the last council meeting, and that is this is very similar to the road that goes up beyond Trudy and Ed Healy's property that they lost, a fight on that over a number of years in court, that was claimed to be a public road into the backcountry. And the court said no, because it wasn't maintained and so therefore it was basically abandoned and was not a road.
Yeah.
So I'm just, I'm just looking from this standpoint and saying that because in this case here, you know, the county wasn't maintaining and didn't have any interest in doing it. So it was a community road to access lands, but the court felt that no, that didn't give them a right to use it.
Yeah.
Even though it was a trail in there for 100 years.
Yeah, I can see a.
So I'm, I'm just looking at it as a similar situation here and, and saying, I, I can, I can understand us trying to keep it accessible to the general public, but then it may be fewer.
Okay, anybody else? What's the pleasure of the council?
Move approval.
I'll second that.
Motion and a second. All those in favor signify with a say a aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next item is item nine C. Sorry, guys, I'm jumping back and forth here between screens. Legislative update regarding SB 164, legislative summary is the legislative update regarding SB 164, which is a water leasing amendment required to continue the process of implementing the abate the water rights settlement. Background, SB 164, both House in Santa Fe, both houses in Santa Fe and is on the way to the governor for her signature. The bill is a water leasing amendment which is required to continue to move along the process of implementing the abate the water rights settlement. This is an important step in preparation for having the settlement implemented sufficiently to qualify for receipt of the federal assistance countenance in the legislation which approved the settlement.
I have nothing more to add to that, councilor.
Mr. Mayor, pro tem, it was a brilliantly written staff report and it's essentially just, it's very, I should not make light of it. It is very good news for implementing abate. A lot of people worked very hard on this. I know the mayor testified at committee hearings. Some of the lawyers involved in this case were literally night and day working on this. It is a huge step forward to implementation and we're very pleased, just to tell the council about it, you don't have to do anything, just for five minutes, be happy about it.
We're happy.
We're happy.
Thank you.
Okay, what is the pleasure of the council?
It's not a.
Not action?
Okay. Next, we will go to item D, consideration of possible approval of, of possible approval regarding resolution 1415, a joint resolution with Taos County on the expansion of the scope and mission of the Taos Health Study Committee, formerly known as Community Hospital Study Committee. Oscar.
Well, this follows through with the direction you gave to us at the last meeting to work with Taos County to draft the resolution that kept the hospital committee operating, gave it a new and broader charge. And what you have there is, is a product of that work. Our assistant town manager did all the work on that, along with her colleagues on the, at the county. And so there you have it, the resolution.
Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, councilmember.
Just one correction on the fourth whereas, needs to read Taos Health Study Committee.
Okay. Councilmember Peralta?
Mr. Mayor, I want to move approval on this and I'd like a second and then I have a discussion.
Seconds.
Motion and a second and discussion?
Mr. Mayor, under the, now therefore, I think that the working relationship could be with Holy Cross Hospital Board of Directors and not the administration, since they are the, the party that makes the decisions for the hospital. And they can designate whoever they want to work with, with the committee, but I think it's, it's more proper that that be the language in there rather than the administration.
I agree.
Okay.
I'll make amendment to my motion for that change.
It's okay with my second.
Okay, motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify with a say a aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Those opposed, motion carries. Next, we will go to item 10. Pending further litigation, the council adjourned to go into executive session to discuss potential litigation. So move.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye. Those opposed, motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Tired, tired, tired.
Yeah.